Good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 13th, 2025, see I got that right, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews the below-market-rate, or BMR, housing agreements associated with these applications. We will be considering a project that meets these criteria this evening. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications, unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. And with that, I will call the roll for commissioners. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Here.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Present.
Commissioner Silin.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
I am Chair Schindler, and I am present, so we have seven commissioners here in chambers, which is a quorum. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Good evening, Mr. Prada. Are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Schindler, and members of the planning commission. Happy New Year. Welcome back. For staff this evening, one update for the commission. The council is meeting tomorrow for its first meeting of the year as well. And on that agenda, the council will be considering whether to adopt a resolution regarding the downtown parking plazas, declaring plazas 1, 2, and 3 as exempt surplus land, and providing feedback and authorization to staff, or a consideration of feedback and authorization to staff, I should say, to release a request for qualifications for development, including affordable housing and parking on the parking plazas 1, 2, and 3. And so that is to implement Housing Element Program H4G. So I wanted to draw that attention to the commission and members of the community that may be participating tonight. And that concludes my reports and announcements. We're happy to take any general questions.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions about that report? I see none. Do commissioners have any reports or announcements of their own? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next element of our agenda: public comment. Under "public comment," the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once, under "public comment," for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under "public comment," other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. So to give us more details on how to participate, Mr. Hochleitner, could you please give some detailed explanations on how people can participate, and then begin our public comment period?
During public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click *9 on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a speaker card located at the back of the room and hand it to me. I don't see any hands raised right now, and I only have speaker cards for agenda items.
Let's just give it one more moment for folks online. Are there any hands raised at this time?
No.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and close-
Wait, no. Sorry. I do have one hand raised online. Give me just one second. Kim Avila, you should be able to speak, and your time begins in just a second. Go ahead.
So I'm sorry, I'll be speaking on a matter that is on the agenda for tonight?
Oh, we have, when we get to that item, we will call for public comment.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised. Chair Schindler.
Thank you for confirming that. I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda then, and move into Item E, which is our consent calendar. Consent calendar is the section of the meeting agenda in which more routine and non-controversial items are grouped together and may be approved with a single vote. Tonight, there are three items on the consent calendar: approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from the November 18th, 2024 meeting; approval of the meeting minutes from the December 2nd, 2024 planning commission meeting; and an architectural control revision for St. Raymond's Catholic Church at 1,100 Santa Cruz Avenue. Mr. Hochleitner, could you please provide instructions and open public comment period for the consent calendar?
As a reminder, if you are participating online, please click the hand icon to raise your hand, or if you're calling in, please click *9 on your keypad and notify staff if you have more than one person that would wish to comment. At the moment, I don't have any speakers, speaker cards, and I don't believe I have any hands raised for consent.
All right, thank you. Then I will go ahead and close public comment for the consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay. Then I am looking for a motion to, regarding the consent calendar. Commissioner Farrak.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second to pass the consent calendar, inclusive of all three items. I will go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Aye.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silin, or sorry, Commissioner Silin.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
All right, and I am also a yes. That is, seven yeses, and the consent calendar is passed. All right. Now we will move into the public hearing component of our agenda. This is the agenda item regarding, this is F1, regarding the use permit architectural control and below-market-rate, or BMR, housing agreement for 320 Sheridan Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit, architectural control, and BMR housing agreement to construct three new three-story residential buildings with a total of 88 multifamily dwelling units, with 87 BMR units and one onsite manager's unit, a community room of approximately 2,217 square feet, and associated site improvements, including a barbecue area and children's play area on a vacant lot in the R3 apartment zoning district. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines, Section 15332's Class 32 exemption for infill development. The application is being reviewed subject to the State Density Bonus Law, Government Code, Section 65915, and relevant amendments, which permits, which permits exemptions to the city's zoning ordinance requirements. The proposed project includes waivers and incentives pursuant to State Density Bonus Law. The proposed project includes two development-related heritage tree removals, which were reviewed and conditionally approved by the city arborist. Mr. Turner, I believe that this evening you are going to provide the staff presentation, and then, I think, introduce and hand off to our applicant, who is also going to speak and make a presentation.
Chair, just before we really get into the exciting part of this item, thank you, Chair Schindler. I just wanted to note that I will unfortunately need to leave early at 8:30, and I just wanted to say that now, so that when I step by, I don't disrupt the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. All right. Mr. Turner.
All right. Just one second while we get the slides up. Perfect. Okay. So yes, good evening, Chair Schindler and commissioners. Tonight, we will be discussing the project at 320 Sheridan Drive. As you mentioned, I'll give a brief presentation, open it up for any initial questions of staff, and then hand it off to the applicant for their presentation and any initial questions of the applicant. Next slide, please. That's good. Thank you. So the project is located at 320 Sheridan Drive, which is located between the Flood Triangle and suburban park neighborhoods. The site is bordered by Highway 101 to the north, Flood Park to the south, single-family residences to the west, and the Life Moves Haven House, Haven Family House Development to the east. The property was identified as a housing opportunity site as part of the 2023 to 2031 Housing Element Update for its ability to provide affordable housing units. Subsequently, the property was rezoned to R3, which allows for multifamily developments. Next slide. So the proposed project would consist of three new multifamily buildings totaling 88 units. The project would be 100% affordable, except for the one onsite manager's unit. The project would also include a community room and onsite improvements, including a barbecue area, children's play areas, landscaping, and service parking. As a related entitlement, the city arborist approved the removal of two heritage trees, one redwood and one oak tree, and the total value of the trees would be replaced onsite as part of the landscaping improvements. Next slide, please. So the project was submitted under State Density Bonus Law, which allows the applicant, where the applicant is entitled to unlimited waivers from development standards that would physically preclude the project as proposed from being built. Additionally, as a 100% affordable project, the project is entitled to five incentives that would lead to identifiable cost savings for the project. As noted, there are a number of waivers requested in this project, namely, to increase floor area ratio and height, decrease front/rear setbacks, and long-term bike parking, remove modulation and building profile requirements, among others. And then, the applicant would be claiming all five of the listed incentives. So on November 6th, the Housing Commission reviewed the draft BMR agreement and unanimously recommended approval. The BMR agreement would restrict 87 of the 88 units to below-market rates, consisting of low and very low units. Additionally, if allowed by state law, the applicant could lease up to 20% of the units as moderate-rate units. The agreement clarifies that eight of the units would be subject to the preference criteria in the city's BMR guidelines, and the other 79 units would be up to the discretion of the applicant in how they want to fill those units. However, the city council is in the process of entering into a funding agreement to provide the project with $1 million in funds from the city's BMR fund, where there may be the opportunity to have a second preference on the units not subject to the city's guidelines, but that's still being discussed. The Housing Commission also urged the applicant to work with staff to identify a management company whose policies would not preclude otherwise-qualified households from occupying the units. So tonight's recommendation would be to determine that the project is exempt from SEQA and to approve the use permit, architectural control permit, and BMR housing agreement, subject to some minor text edits in the resolution, which I need to read into the record in the next couple of slides. So hang with me. So in the recitals, these are the whereas statements. The third, ninth, and 10th recitals would read as follows. So whereas maximum allowed density in the R3 zone is 20 dwelling units per acre, and the maximum number of units allowed by the zoning ordinance on the project site is 50 units. And whereas the applicant proposes to increase the project density by 76% for a total of 88 units, and whereas the project would consist of 50 affordable units and 38 bonus units, 37 of which would be affordable. Next slide, please. So under the use permit findings, this is Section 2.1. A. The resolution would read as follows: "Consideration and due regard were given to the nature and condition of all adjacent uses and structures into general plans for the area in question and surrounding areas in impact of the application hereon, in that the proposed use permit is consistent with the R3 zoning district and the general plan because the multifamily residential developments of three or more units are allowed to be constructed on R3 lots subject to granting of a use permit, and the project, and the proposed project conforms to applicable zoning standards that are not altered by waivers and incentives provided by state law." The proposed project advances the general plan, specifically the 2023 to 2031 Housing Element Update, by creating additional housing opportunities for lower-income residents. The property is included in the housing element as a housing opportunity site, and development of the proposed project would help the city meet its arena. Last one. This would be added to the environmental review section, which is currently listed as a second Section 4, but should be Section 6. And it should read, "In addition, none of the exceptions in SEQA guidelines, Section 15300.2, to the categorical exemption applied to the project." Finally, we received additional correspondence after publication of the staff report. The majority of the emails were sent directly to the planning commission, but I sent an updated consolidated list earlier this afternoon. There was a mix of support in opposition to the project. The supporters generally mentioned the need to provide teachers of the Ravenwood City School District with housing options, and for the project to move forward as an important implementation measure for the housing element. Other residents exposed, expressed concerns over access to the site, in addition of traffic, and advocate for a second entrance, or to reduce the scope of the project. Further commenters expressed concerns with adding a second entrance, citing existing cut-through traffic in the Flood Triangle neighborhood and the potential for additional traffic in that neighborhood. So thank you, and with that, I will take any initial questions of staff. If there are none, like I said, the applicant has a presentation.
Do commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff at this time? Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Through the chair. Not being an expert on BMR housing agreements myself, can staff clarify what it would mean for the city to have second preference? Sure, and with the caveat that, like I said, this is still being discussed with the city council through the finalization of the funding agreement. But generally, the BMR guidelines include a list of preference criteria. So people who currently live or work in Menlo Park are eligible for the BMR requirements, BMR households. The, we can only require 15% of the base units on this project to comply with the city's preference. So eight of those units would comply with our preferences. The discussion about the second preference, obviously, the original intent of this project was to provide housing for employees of the Ravenswood City School District. So assuming they have first preference on the units, there's potential that the city, for any unfilled units, could have a second, that next preference. But that's all still being discussed. Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Beruzzi. I'm curious for staff, and I'm probably going to ask this question of developers as well. If you can tell us about any conversations that the staff have had with Life Moves, Caltrans, and the San Mateo County about various possible access routes to or through this development? I think there were conversations happening in 2022, and I know council might have been privy to those, and I don't know which staff were involved.
So if it's okay with you, I might hold off on that until after the applicant's presentation, and then that could be a topic of discussion during the discussion period.
Mr. Turner, if you're comfortable with it, I think that may be a good idea, just to proceed with the applicant's presentation. And then if commissioners have clarifying questions, we may be able to direct them to you or the applicant during the, the appropriate period after that presentation?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Great. So I think Mr. Spielberg is presenting this evening. Let me check the mic. Sometimes it's not, it's not on from the beginning.
Can you hear me?
I think so, yeah.
All right, well, well, thank you very much for taking your evening to spend with us. We are very excited to present the project to you tonight, tell you a little bit about it, and hopefully move forward to build some affordable housing for teachers and staff of the Ravenswood District, as well as people that live and work in Menlo Park. So, as you mentioned, I'm Steve Spielberg, Senior Vice President of Affordable Housing for Alliant Communities. And, Chris, if you could... I'm gonna, well, the next slide will have my team, a lot of which are here tonight, part of the presentation. Lance, who is sitting behind me from SDG Architects, will go ahead and present. And I've got other team members here, so when we get to the question period, we've got a lot of support for anything that I might not be able to answer myself. So you don't necessarily need to see anything on the screen for me to present. So when, oh, okay, great. I was, you can go ahead and go to the next one. So I don't think we're seeing the whole screen. Either way, I'll, I'll, great, thank you. Just a little bit about us. We are a multifamily developer, and we really try to cover the spectrum of developing communities for people that really need housing. We start all the way from extremely low-income, 30% AMI-ded restricted units, and go through 50, 60, and 80. Finance with tax credits, which is what I specialize in. I've been doing that for 20 years. Our company also specializes in providing mixed-income housing and housing for those that we would call moderate-income or attainable housing. I'm not going to go through a very long presentation tonight. I'll probably just hit some of the highlights, and Lance will walk you through the architectural stuff. Our next slide shows you an overview of where the site is, which we just saw, I think everyone's familiar with. And if you can move on to the next one, just a little bit of history, which you may or may not know. The site is owned by the Ravenswood City School District, and they will continue to be the owner as we go forward, and our company will ground-lease the site from them. The site was used as an elementary school until 2011. It had approximately 300 students and 30 staff that came and went daily from the school. In 2014, it was demolished, and so the site sat vacant for about a decade now. And the district looked at multiple options to decide what they might want to do with it. They evaluated several things, including a school bus yard, private school, office space for the district. Something I learned recently, actually, is that if the district were to develop something for its own use, then it would not go through the type of process we're going through here tonight. So I guess fortunately for me, and fortunately for the community, not only do we get to provide affordable housing, but we also get to provide some input on the process. Part of the district's thought process also included a survey of their own staff, and as, I think we've got some staffs, some stats on this slide, and a significant portion of district employees, teachers and staff, would be eligible for affordable housing. And a significant percentage were considering, this is a two-year-old study now, but at the time, were considering leaving the district as their employer due to their long commutes and high cost of housing. So it really made a perfect fit to do affordable housing. And several years ago, we responded to a request for proposals, and were selected to do an affordable housing project on the site. If you can move on to the next one, we have spent the last several years during that time, not only doing our planning, but doing community outreach and shaping the project through some of that community outreach. When Lance walks you through some of the architectural slides, he may point out some of the differences of things that have changed along the way as we've taken the community input. And, let's see here. As- And, let's see here, as you heard Chris mention, our most recent hearing was actually in this room with the council members who committed $1 million of funding to the project. We plan to, assuming that we're successful here tonight, our next step would be to apply for low-income housing tax credits and hopefully get an award and start construction by the end of the year. As you probably know, in California, affordable housing is fairly difficult to get done. It often takes many years, sometimes gets derailed by months, if not years. A whole host of things pop up and seem to slow down affordable housing. Oftentimes, if we miss a funding opportunity, it could take nine to 12 months or longer to have that opportunity come up again. For example, the last tax credit round was just this past August. The next tax credit round is May 20th. So, as you can see, if you miss by even a little bit, you could be delayed by a much longer. So we're really hopeful that we can keep the project on track tonight and move forward to apply for tax credits and break ground, hopefully by the end of the year. So, with that as a little background, I'm going to turn it over to Lance, and he'll give you a little more background on where we've come from, and you know, I'll say, sorry, one more thing. I mentioned that a lot of the project was shaped by community outreach, and the first thing I'm reminded of on that slide was that when I joined the organization about a year ago, we were planning a four-story, one building, and through the community feedback that we've gotten, it's now three, three-story buildings, and we really tried to break it up and use architecture like the neighborhood, and so I'll let Lance take over, and then he'll turn it back to me, and then we'll discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Lance Cornell, Principal Architect with SDG Architects. Happy to be in front of you tonight to talk to you a little bit about the architectural portion of the project. As you can see here, it is a conglomeration of three apartment buildings, each of them are three stories, primarily for affordable housing with one rental unit. Next slide, please. The first thing we did as architects is we want to understand the context and the neighborhood upon which the buildings are going to be placed. So the first thing we did is survey the neighborhood, looked at the general architectural layout, the scale, the massing, the articulation, and worked that into our design start for this project. And it was only reinforced with the community outreach that we did and getting feedback from the community in terms of not making a building stand out, but also work with the community. So these pictures here are just a broad example of some of the neighborhood elevations that we use as inspiration for our elevations. Next slide. As you can see here, it's a combination of traditional and modern farmhouse. The elevations, they use the same materials within the context of the neighborhood, which compose mostly of board-and-bat siding, trim details, composition roof, a combination of shed roof and gable roofs, a lot of different types of treatments in terms of openings and voids on the porches and decks. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see the three different elevation styles. We used a combination of massing and articulation to break down the size of the buildings, shed down the roofs on the long planes, as well as show the base as a slightly different element than the top two floors. The color scheme further enhanced the articulation and variety in the apartment complex. The materiality consists of lap siding, board-and-bat, there's a little bit of plaster in some of the elevation elements, as well as a color variation on all three color schemes. The sustainability aspect was something that was really important, not only for us as architects, I'm a lead AP as myself, but also to the city, and we worked with a consultant to meet the lead silver equivalency for the city's requirements. And through that process, and the design review booklet is a great example of those exhibits, we were able to enhance the project that way. We did include the purple pipe irrigation for future irrigation needs as the infrastructure builds into the system, it'll already be there. Solar panels, solar-ready panels will be there, as well as sound mitigation from the noise from the Highway 101 to the north. Next slide, please. And in this slide here, you can see the circulation pattern for the building. The primary access is going to be to plan left, where you see site access onto Sheraton Drive, and then the emergency access is only for emergency access, it'll include a gate there that'll be locked and accessed only by emergency vehicles. And then to the south, that's the pedestrian and bike access to the existing park below. In this slide here, you can see, yeah, this will be a good one too, you can see that we've maintained the one heritage tree there and designed around it, so we have parking elements around it with an enhanced landscape area to keep the root section thriving. And in this one here, this is our community amenities site, this shows the elevation, the floor plan, and it shows all the different elements there, the play areas. The community center will also have an area for laundry, kitchen, it'll also have a small area for office space and communion. The area there on the right-hand side, it shows the areas where you can have fitness centers in the upper right-hand area of the site there. Next slide, please. The bike facilities, this is something that we had taken to heart, we've heard from the community in terms of their preference for bike parking, and so we responded to that in providing a portfolio of ways of bike parking, both short-term, long-term, and in variety of places throughout the site. And so in the upper left-hand corner, there was a dog park there initially, but through conversations and interactions with the community, we decided to provide additional bike parking there in lieu of a dog park. In addition to that, we have a variety of different spaces, we have 10 parking space, bike parking spaces, just to the west, just to the left side of the play area, and then across the street near Building One, we have four bike park spaces. Next slide, please. And this one here is just the general unit mix of the sites. We have 42 one-bedrooms, 23 two-bedrooms, and 23 three-bedrooms. As we've all mentioned, 88 units, 87 are rentable. And from this here, we're going to pass it back over to Steve to wrap up the presentation, but I'll be available to any questions you may have. Thank you.
So this slide pretty much speaks for itself, but just to clarify a few things along the way, the site is planned for 100% affordable housing. We are doing a mix of AMIs from extremely low, 30% AMI, up to 80%. There's a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms for families, and we do have a set aside for live-work preference for folks from the city of Menlo Park, and I don't recall if I clarified this already, but there was a question earlier, so if there, if Ravenswood District has the first preference and does not have enough people from the district on their waitlist, it would go to, back to the city's waitlist. So that's what that means in the earlier question. So, moving along, that's kind of our whole presentation, and really appreciate you taking the time to listen. I think there's, we've done a lot of community outreach, I know that there's a lot of input from the neighbors, we really tried to take as much as we could and actually shape our project with it. Lance pointed out already that some of the things we've done, I'll give a short recap off the top of my head, we have tweaked the bike parking since we've gotten community feedback, and one thing you may not know, affordable housing developers are also long-term owners. One of the requirements of the tax credit program is that we hold the properties for the next 15 years. So as long-term owners, we really want to and do maintain the building and our tenants as best as possible, and in that spirit, we are starting with several bike lockers, but we're very amenable and plan to just kind of see how things shape up as the project leases, and if people have a need, we would fill up more bike parking there. I think another thing that we think about is, what does the project look like? And there's balconies, and if they turn out to be covered with bikes, that's when we would also expand that bike parking. These are all things that we've been thinking about in response to community feedback. We've added additional short-term bike spaces, we've, to the greatest extent possible, explored what it means to have egress from all directions, and so what you're seeing is really a plan that includes as much community feedback as we possibly can. You know, as kind of just a quick recap before I let everyone discuss and ask whatever questions you might have of me, we are really excited about moving the project forward, and for affordable housing, it's such a great need in California, and as you probably see, projects get derailed for so many reasons, NIMBYism, missing financing deadlines, having to apply for multiple financing over and over again, which could take a project from months to years to sometimes not happening at all. So, we've really done our best to create a zoning-compliant project that takes into as much consideration as we possibly can from the neighbors, and we really look forward to being great long-term neighbors in the community and providing housing to the teachers, staff, and people that live and work in Menlo Park.
Thank you. So, we will now do any clarifying questions from commissioners, and then following that, we will, and so those could be clarifying questions either for the applicant or for staff, and then following clarifying questions, we will move into public comment, and then finally, commission discussion. So do commissioners have clarifying questions either for staff or applicant? I think Commissioner Peruzzi.
I'm having a lot about access, so I don't know exactly who gets these questions, but I'll just... So, starting, actually, with something really micro for the architect, I'm thinking about what it would be like to have an e-bike and be dependent on that for transportation, and I was trying, I was squinting at your diagrams of the storage units and trying to understand if those are large enough. It almost looked like the larger the unit, the smaller the storage unit, so I'm curious if you could elucidate if that's, and also whether there are outlets nearby for people who might be charging bikes. Please, yes?
Thank you very much. That's a great question, and again, one of the things that we're leaning on is, once the development is established, to really react to what the residents are actually providing. Those types of storage units, one, are very expensive, and with electrical, it just adds to that expense, and so from a maintenance standpoint, we want to be great neighbors, and we want to be great, you know, operators of this apartment complex, so the operations of that is going to be reactive. We're going to wait and see if there are going to be a need and people actually using the e-bikes onsite and then reacting to that. The infrastructure for those would be very, very expensive, so putting that out there with the thought that they may use it and not using it as a fairly big expenditure without understanding really what their needs actually are.
Oh, sorry, I think you thought I was talking about the bike locker, and I was actually thinking about the individual storage units that were attached to each balcony or patio or whatever.
There'll be an exterior outlet on each deck, so there'll be, yeah, there'll be a waterproof outlet, GFCI.
Okay, all right, thanks, that helps.
More than answered your question on the other one, then.
Yeah, I know, that's okay, that's also good to know. I'm also curious about the park access, and I don't know who this would be for. So I think I read in the plan that you're in the conversations with San Mateo County, is there definitely going to be an access point between the development and Flood Park that will be open during park open hours? Is that a done deal?
Yeah, I can answer that question. There will be an access point. How and what the details are are a little bit to be determined in terms of when that park will be open. But there will, there is a planned access point on our site plan to that park. So it'll be on that park's responsibility to open, have their part open so that we can open our gates to that park.
Do you have any concerns that they might decide they don't want that to happen for you?
We're always concerned about not having parks for residents, but it's a little bit out of our hands, that's not something that we have any control over.
Okay, but they haven't given any indication that it might not...
Not that I'm aware of, and I can...
Okay, okay. So about the fire exit over by Van Buren, is that an exit that's like, I'm sorry, there was probably a diagram, and I'm trying, I can't remember, is it like something I could limbo under if I'm a pedestrian, or are we talking about like a fortress and I'd have to come out of boot camp?
It's the former rather than the latter.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it'd be some sort of bar type of gate, and it's not an exit, it's an EVA, it's emergency vehicle access, so it's a way in for fire, an alternate way in for fire trucks and ambulance and services to access the site. In an event of catastrophic evacuation, yes, you could probably exit out of it, but it's not designed for that. It's for access from a...
Understood, and would people be discouraged who live there from walking or biking out that way?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have questions? I can take a break.
Clarifying questions. Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler, through the chair. I have a question for staff. I believe I read in one of the communications that there is a deadline for the city around January 27th as it pertains to some part of this project, and I was hoping that staff could clarify what is that deadline and whether the city has already met that deadline or has not yet met that deadline, and sorry, whether or not the actions we take tonight impact that deadline at all.
Yes, good questions. That is referencing the AB 1633 deadline, which, right, puts a time limit for the city to make a determination that the project is exempt from SEQA review, provided that the applicant has provided the city with substantial evidence that the project is indeed exempt from SEQA. So that deadline, yes, is on January 27th. The city would need to make that secret determination, which is made by the Planning Commission. So the actions tonight as part of the recommended actions and the resolution would be to determine that the project is exempt from SEQA, and that would meet the city's deadline.
Okay, thank you, and if it's more appropriate, you can punt this next part of the question to discussion, but in the event that either we do not make that determination tonight or we make that determination, but it is appealed to city council and city council does not make that determination by January 27th, what are the consequences for the city?
I am going to defer to Leila as part of our city attorney's office.
Good evening, Planning Commission, and thank you for that question, Commissioner. The deadline for the AB 1633 compliance does indeed fall on January 27th, and in order to remain in compliance with the requirements of AB 1633, the, you know, city would need to make that SEQA determination by that deadline. Otherwise, you know, there could be some consequences with regard to potential litigation or efforts to enforce that provision of state law.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Commissioner Seelen.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a follow-up question on the CEQA topic. So since, I believe an EIR was already done for the housing element as a whole, I guess, could you clarify what the CEQA analysis is that's required for this project? And I saw the report in the packet that said, you know, that this project is exempt based on that analysis, but I'm just wondering what that analysis is looking at, at a high level. Thank you.
So the EIR that was certified as part of the Housing Element Update was a program-level EIR. It's actually subsequent EIR to the Connect Menlo General Plan Update EIR. And that, that's like a higher-level view of the environmental impacts of the overall program. So that took into account the potential impacts of implementing the housing element, which includes, you know, thousands of units. Every time a project goes through discretionary review, it's subject to CEQA review in some way. In some cases, there's, you know, statutory and categorical exemptions that apply that says you don't need to do any more CEQA review for this type of project. There are other instances where there are potentially significant impacts that a specific project could have that maybe weren't studied to that level of specificity in like the overall program EIR. So that's when, like something like mitigated negative declaration or tiered EIR would come into play for a specific project. So in this case, we, you know, studied the impacts. The applicants provided some technical documentation. We had a consultant peer review that documentation and the justification for an infill exemption. I found that, yes, the infill exemption applied, and there aren't any exceptions to the exemption that would apply to the project that would kick it into the larger, you know, environmental review process. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, thanks. And a follow-up question, so then, is the only deadline we're dealing with the CEQA part of it and the other, so there's like the use permit, architecture control, and housing agreement, do those also have other deadlines? Or if tonight, the commission finds that project is exempt from CEQA, but the other topics don't get decided on or extended, is that an issue in terms of state law?
Not from like a drop-dead date, like the January 27th CEQA date. There is a limitation to the number of public hearings the housing project can go through under SB 330. Housing projects are limited to five hearings. We've had one, this would be the second, any continuance would be a third, a potential appeal would be a fourth. So we start running the risk of, you know, hitting that target. But yeah, the, another issue potentially is that if the project is appealed, then the city would have to sort of remake the secret determination findings. So then that's where, if the project starts getting pushed out further and further, we could potentially run afoul of AB 1633, as Leila mentioned.
Through the chair, if I could also just add to what Chris has explained. Additionally, cities are required to approve or disapprove the project within 60 days of determining that the project is exempt under Government Code 65950. And so for that reason, we typically recommend that the CEQA determination and project approval or denial be made at the same meeting, in addition to the reasons that, you know, Chris just laid out.
That answered my question. Thank you. I don't have any more questions right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Silverstein.
I have a couple of questions. The first is regarding the bicycle parking waiver. It states in the waiver request that including the full amount of long-term spaces, such as a bicycle storage room, would preclude the project from being able to accommodate the proposed density. Could I get some clarification as to what analysis was put into that conclusion? And is it cost? Is it space? What was considered when making the determination that providing that would preclude the density from occurring?
Thank you for that question. It's a good question. It was a balance between a number of things. There was a huge outcry to make sure that we had a balance of open space common to all residents, as well as having space for bike parking. So there was a balance there that we had to strike between providing enough bike parking and enough open space. And so we have a tot lot and play area, which obviously takes up some open space. And then we wanted a distributive network of bike parking throughout the site so that people could be somewhat near their units and their bike overnight or through extended periods of time. So through that analysis is where we came up with a balance where we can strike between cost, proximity, open space, convenience, and essentially cost in a lot of ways for the, for the things that we mentioned previously.
While you're up here, do you have an understanding of what that cost would be to, not necessarily provide the 130 or so, but for a long-term bicycle storage facility that would accommodate N long-term bikes?
Yeah.
Just for context.
Yeah, as a general rule of thumb, you know, per bike space for a locker, you're probably looking at about 2,400 per space. And that space has, can be subdivided into two parking, two bikes in it. So 1,200 per space, kind of on average. If you had an e-bike, which is taller, had more, you know, had a utility requirement, like electrical outlets, those things go up from there. So it can quickly go into a quarter million dollars for that, that amenity. And just to clarify a little bit on the approvals question that came up earlier, I believe we're at four public hearings at this point. And Chris, if you can kind of, or the attorney can clarify that, I think we're at, this is the fourth public hearing out of the five that are required to meet the state requirements for approvals.
Through the chair, I think we'll just take a moment to respond. The NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability Request, the council review of that would not be a public hearing. For purposes of SB 330, that's separate and apart from the project. So we'll need to look at the numbers again, but from the date of deeming the project complete, as Mr. Turner mentioned, we're looking at the Housing Commission and tonight Planning Commission meeting.
So just to be sure that we've understood that, Mr. Prado, you're saying this is the second public hearing tonight?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
It's okay. This is the second public hearing for this project?
That's staff's understanding, yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yeah, just two more quick questions, clarifying questions. One, in Exhibit Q on the draft of the project conditions, it states that the project is subject to the California Green Building Code Standard, parentheses, California, is that still expected to be the case?
Yes.
Great. And then my last question is, the traffic, traffic impact analysis on page 338 of the Agenda Packet states that Hexagon recommends the project provide enough vehicle parking spaces to meet the city's requirements, referring to the full 176 parking spots. Does either the developer or staff know if that recommendation was data-driven based on their analysis, or is it just simply a blanket recommendation to always adhere to city's specific zoning ordinance?
Yeah, to answer that question, that recommendation was based off of the standard R3 parking requirements, which require two parking spaces per unit, one of which needs to be covered. So my understanding of that recommendation was just like a general recommendation. As a state density bonus project, there is a separate parking standard that the state law includes.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the kind of state density bonus. I just wasn't sure if this specific recommendation that was stated in the report was driven based on a formal traffic analysis and an understanding, or if it was just, well, we always recommend whatever the city ordinance is, and therefore we'll put it in the report.
Right. It was more qualitative in nature and just recommend that apply the city standards. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further clarifying questions from commissioners, we will move into public comment on this one, on Item F1. Mr. Huckleitner, could you please remind the members of the community how they can participate and open us up to public comment? And actually, once you have a rough count of hands raised online and in-person comment cards, let's figure out how we're going to handle time allocations. If we have more than 15 or so speakers, we may reduce each speaker's allocated time from three minutes down to two minutes.
Thank you. As a reminder, people may participate online by clicking the hand icon on your screen. If you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to indicate that you have a comment. If more than one person is going to be commenting on your account, please let us know at the beginning of your time so that we can make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. At this time, I have three in-person comment cards, and I have nine hands raised so far online. 10, 11.
Three, 11 online and three in person. Let's go ahead then and proceed with the standard three minutes of at-time allocated per person. Thank you.
Do you want to do in-person first?
Certainly.
Okay. The first person I have is Nels DeLander. And your time will begin now.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and City Staff. My name is Nels DeLander, and I'm a representative of Carpenter's Local 217 of San Mateo County that covers the area of Menlo Park. I'd like to tell you the importance of having this project at 320 Sheridan Drive to be built by a responsible general contractor that utilizes apprenticeships, requires health care for workers, and pays construction workers a living wage. By utilizing apprenticeships, you're getting professional-trained workers not only trained to do the task at hand, but also done safely. Safety is number one for me, knowing that men and women are able to go home at the end of the long day in one piece. By utilizing trained apprentices that are trained in safety, you're giving a better chance that workers can come home unharmed and be able to provide for their families. Provided health care is a must for construction workers. By using general contractors that provide access to health care with no cost to employees, you're giving them a peace of mind, knowing that if they get into an accident, the, does not, they are covered and won't be in $1,000 in debt. Also, by paying workers every standard wages, you're giving workers a fair chance in life. How much does it cost to live here in the Bay Area? How dare unresponsible general contractors exploit working class just to make sure they get the profits? These are human beings that deserve a fair wage for the hard work they put in. Anything less is disrespectful and shows what contractors are really about. All I would like to see is this project be built by a responsible general contractor that takes care of their workers, workforce, and not exploits them for the profit. This is a good-sized development. I would love to see workers being taken care of properly when they work here in the city of Menlo Park. Let's not forget about the men and women that wake up every day just to complete these projects presented before us. Affordable housing is great, but good-paying jobs is greater. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person that I have is Rob Solano. You can adjust the mic.
Can you, can you hear me? Great.
Perfect.
I'm speaking as a citizen in Menlo Park, not a Fire Board member. I have over 40 years of public safety experience. Let us not forget the people of LA area, many friends and relatives, they are in our prayers. Unfortunately, this could happen here, as recently as the Oakland Hills fire and an alarm fire in the Fair Oaks area. Let us not forget our critical infrastructure, water, power, and how these disasters may affect our insurance rates. I have written to both the Menlo Park Housing Commission and the council to support and consider the approval of the funding for the Sheridan Drive project if it included a low-cost second ingress egress. Estimates run about $120,000 using the Caltrans property into Van Buren. Safety for all should be paramount to the surrounding community and the first responders that will answer the emergency calls for service. If you haven't been there, please go and observe the narrow road off Sheridan Drive. It was never designed to accommodate so many vehicles. Please take in consideration the total community involving traffic, emergency response times, and the lives of our firefighter workforce. I refer to page 85 of the report, the staff report that was submitted, where it talks about second ingress egress. The write-up in the report is really not reflective of what the community has inputted. Using words permissible minimum, Fire District says its minimum. The Fire Chief stated that a second egress would be safer. Then the report doesn't specifically speak to the surrounding community where over 50 emails and a petition of over 300 residents was presented involving the project to the Fire Board and to the city of Menlo Park. Importantly, the developer stated at the Menlo Park Council meeting in November, they had no problem in adding a second ingress egress since a small one was already in their plans. And an added burden was placed on Menlo Park by Atherton, placing a high-density project within a few blocks of the Sheridan Drive project without taking into consideration the added traffic response times involving Bay and Ringwood. In conclusion, there are many compelling reasons to create an easy-access second exit from 320 Sheridan Drive to Van Buren. The use of Menlo Park tax money, around $1 million, recently approved by the council, should be put to good use. And I just want to say, out of my record, that they've been trying to work with us to make it more community-effective. So thank you all for that, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
The last person I have for in-person is Skip Hilton.
My name is Skip Hilton. I'm a 31-year resident of Menlo Park, 27 years living in suburban park neighborhood off Bay Road. Thanks for hearing public comment on this project. I also submitted a letter to the Planning Commission yesterday that has more details than should be in your packet. I first want to thank some of the commissioners I was able to speak with for their time and for their questions, but I also like to thank all commissioners and staff for all the work you guys are doing on this project and all the projects coming to Menlo Park to make these projects beneficial for both new and existing residents. I attended the Housing Commission and the City Council meetings where this came up, and also some Fire District meetings where this issue came up. And in all of those discussions, all those groups were very clear that they were not the right ones, it was not within their scope to talk about specifics of the use permit or the project, but that they all said the Planning Commission is the place to do that. So all roads lead to you guys, and this seems to be one of the few places we have to provide some detailed input from the residents. As you know, the city recently adopted the environmental justice element, and according to that report, our area where this project is located has a very high traffic burden rating of 95, which is almost 35 points more than the city average, making it the highest traffic burden in the city. And it found that the pollution burden is at 71, which is 15 points above the average for the city. Now, I assume that the EJE was adopted so that Planning Commission and City Council could consider that any of the neighbors. could consider that any of the neighborhoods impacted by new projects and use that to improve the environmental outcomes with mitigations or other improvements. This is, I think, an opportunity to leverage the EJE for that purpose. While overall, this project is an ideal low-market rate housing project, the site is not well-served by public transit, and that's detailed in my letter, which means the 88 new units are likely going to add 150 or more new vehicles, adding to the congestion of an already very overburdened area. Also, Atherton, as Rob mentioned, recently rezoned four parcels on Bay Road, up to 36 more units, maybe 70 more vehicles going into the same corridor. The second entrance, I should say, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over. We believe a second entrance to the development of Van Buren is an obvious and logical solution. Will mitigate traffic along Bay Road, which is also a safe route to school used by dozens of children and teenagers going to Laurel, Ensenel, and Menlo Atherton. In addition, the developer did state at City Council that they don't have any problem building the second entrance if the land can be accessed in a reasonable time. I ask that you consider reviewing the safety, health, and traffic benefits of a second entrance, and ask that the developer work with Caltrans, the Ravenswood School District, and adjacent landlords to design and develop such an entrance. Lastly, I'd say I'm sensitive to the concerns of the residents and flood triangle of additional cut-through traffic, but I don't believe Van Buren would create that. I think that most traffic would be heading southbound towards Willow and would not cut through the neighborhood. But without the second entrance, lots of southbound traffic on Bay is going to cut through the neighborhood to access Van Buren. So, it might actually make things worse. And at a minimum, a second entrance would result in a shared burden between the neighborhoods as opposed to 100% of that cut-through going through one neighborhood, suburban park. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
We're going to proceed with the online. I'm just going to be going in order that the hands were raised. The first person that I have is Ken Chan. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Good evening, members of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the senior organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. I'd first like to thank staff for all their hard work in putting together their presentation and report on tonight's item. On behalf of HLC, I'd like to express our support for Alliance Strategic Development's 320 Sheridan Proposal for the Ravenswood City School District's teachers and staff. It needs to be acknowledged that the demographics of where we live are changing rapidly, forcing us to not only rethink the types of housing we need versus what is being built today, but to also come up with new and innovative solutions to address our housing needs. The RCSD Homes for teachers and staff can be one of those solutions, but only with your support. If we don't plan for the housing, if we don't plan today for the housing needs of the people in our communities, people like your district's teachers and staff who make this community what it is, your community will lose what it values most about living here. It's been proven at this point that we all thrive when we live near our places of work. These homes will reduce the stress caused by the time and expense that your teachers and staff spend commuting. Less commuting leaves more time for health, family, and more importantly, community, especially a community where your children can have a better, a better chance at succeeding in school, getting a job, and building their own strong families here in Menlo Park, because your district teachers and staff will no longer have to deal with the stress of commuting and finding a safe and stable place to call home. At the end of the day, how you choose to respond matters. Tonight is your moment to positively impact your community. We urge you to seize it and to support the 320 Sheridan Proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person that I have is Gina Sudaria. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Gina Sudaria, Superintendent of the Ravenswood City School District, and I'm here to express my strong support for the Sheridan Drive Apartments Project on the former flood site. This initiative represents an extraordinary opportunity for our district and community, and I urge the commission to approve this project. At Ravenswood City School District, we aim to ensure every student receives a high-quality education, and every staff member feels empowered to deliver on that promise. However, our ability to meet these goals is impacted by the stark inequities. While our district serves the same city as others like Menlo Park and Los Lomitas School Districts, Ravenswood receives only half of the base funding per pupil. Despite these challenges, our community has shown unmatched resilience, innovation, and determination. One of the most significant barriers we face is housing affordability. A recent analysis revealed that Ravenswood staff experienced the largest gap in the state between their salaries and the cost of a typical-priced home. Many of our educators and classified team members are commuting far from, from, far, sorry, from far distances, straining their quality of life and their connection to the communities they serve. This challenge directly affects our ability to retain talented team members and build the strong, stable school communities that our students need to thrive. The Sheridan Drive Apartments Project is not just a housing solution. It's a transformative opportunity for our district. Over 85% of our staff have expressed interest in living in this development. By enabling our teachers and staff to live within the community they serve, this project would foster deeper relationships and enhance staff retention and build a stronger sense of belonging for both students and staff. It would create a direct pipeline for educators to engage with students, families, and the community beyond the school day, contributing to a richer, more stable educational experience. When educators live locally, they can dedicate more time to their craft, invest in meaningful connections with students, and help build a vibrant school culture. These outcomes are directly tied to student success and the broader goals of our district. So, tonight, I respectfully ask the commission to vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person I have is Kim Avila. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. Thank you for hearing me. I am CSCA president, as well as operations coordinator at the new middle school, Caesar Chavez Ravenswood Middle School, and I am an employee of 25 years in Ravenswood City School District. Our teachers and staff, who play a vital role in shaping the future of our youth, often face financial struggles due to high cost of living, due to the high cost of living in the city which they work and serve students. Many teachers and staff live far away, have long hours of commutes going to and from work, traveling as far as Stockton, Tracy, Mantica, Modesto. Our families also would benefit from the affordable housing, as many of our families and students are renting rooms, living in RVs, some even in shelters. Parents are working, most parents are working two jobs. It is still just not affordable, and the cost of living is super-high for our families and for our staff. These issues ultimately impact the quality of life for all residents and hinder our collective efforts to build a thriving cohesive community. Thank you for listening and considering affordable housing in the city of Menlo Park.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person I have is Nicole Sullivan. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Thank you. My name is Nicole Sullivan, and I have the privilege of representing the Ravenswood Teachers Association as its president. I myself live in San Francisco with my family while working in Ravenswood, a situation that many of our colleagues also face due to the pressing challenge of high rents in our region relative to our salaries. We are deeply committed to the Ravenswood City School District and the community we serve. However, one of the critical factors contributing to teacher turnover is the difficulty of securing housing close to our workplaces that we can afford. I'm pleased to share that more than half of our teachers have expressed interest in the housing we aim to develop. With your support, we can turn the vision of affordable housing into reality for our educators. Thank you for your attention and for considering the approval of this vital project.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person I have is Luis Marinette. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, this is Luis Morante. I'm calling on behalf of the Berry Council. I'm vice president of public policy for the Berry Council, which represents 400 of the region's largest employers. I'm proud to be here tonight to support 320 Sheridan as it requests your support for several permits. As you know, the region faces an enormous shortage of affordable housing. That's especially true for teachers who provide one of the most important services to our region and are critical to securing its economic dynamism. As we've heard, this project's commitment to sustainability and affordability make it one of the most significant projects going on in the region right now, which is, the region is facing a real shortage of both market rate and affordable projects. So, your community is quite lucky to have one before tonight. The housing crisis among teachers is deeply intertwined with the current teacher shortage and a lack of teacher retention. According to a learned, excuse me, a Learning Policy Institute analysis, the average annual teacher turnover rate in California is 16%, with 8.5% leaving the profession altogether, and 8% leaving their current school for another. In some districts, the teacher turnover rate is 25% or higher. That's especially true of districts where the cost of housing is high, and about 60% of Ravenswood City School District teachers report contemplating, considering other jobs or moving altogether because of the high cost of housing. This project makes important and thoughtful progress on the whole region's shortage of affordable housing, and the innovative strategy to work with the school district to house teachers and other staff is to be commended and highlighted as a best practice for the region. I hope you will decide to support this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person that I have is Catherine Dumont. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Hi, good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Catherine Dumont. I live in Lynnfield Oaks, and I'm one to express my support for approval of this project tonight. I grew up in the days when California public schools were the best in the nation and when teachers and staff could afford to live in the community where they worked. Today, that's sadly far from the case. I also want to support the, the, this, the statistics about the teachers and staff, especially in the Ravenswood District, speak to the desperate need for these affordable homes. And I feel that everyone in the community benefits when we provide a strong foundation of education. I think this project is a real step forward toward a brighter future for everyone. I think my comments on my concerns regarding the more, being more forward-looking on our alternatives to driving, the transportation alternatives, and especially, I understand now that folks are driving in from far away, but once they have the opportunity to live closer to where they work, I think we should be more responsible in providing safe, secure, and weather-protected storage for bikes, scooters, and e-bikes. That's what I would really like to see. I think it would push us in the right direction toward achieving our climate goals. I think it's unfortunate to look at where things are today and not look at where things are tomorrow. And I also think that if market rate housing was being built here, that we, those things, amenities would certainly be included. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this project so far. Again, I heartily support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next commenter I have is Sarah Zolweg. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Zolweg. I'm a four-year resident of Menlo Park. I am a nurse and a public health researcher, and so I see every day, both in my research and in my practice, the impact that access to affordable housing and high-quality education have on our health. And so, I strongly urge the Housing Commission's approval and support of this project. I found it to be an incredibly compelling point that 40% of students in the Ravenswood District are homeless, and that it's therefore really challenging to recruit and retain teachers. And so, it's not surprising that we have a shortage of teachers in this, in this district. And so, I really second Gina Sudera's point that by providing adequate housing opportunities for teachers, they can invest more time into their students and into our community. I also really appreciate previous commenters' points about environmental justice concerns and the corresponding need for mitigation measures, as well as putting in a second entrance for safety. I also wanted to bring up, I hope that, and I may have missed this, I hope that the developers have considered the mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units based on the needs of teachers, and that, and that that's based on research of what, what those needs are. I guess I just was surprised that, it seems like one-bedrooms would be less in demand than two and three-bedrooms, and so I was surprised to find that they were 50% of the mix. And, but overall, I really, I think that this is an incredible opportunity for our city to support our children and our teachers, and I just, I really encourage the Housing Commission to approve and support this. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person that I have is Carolyn, no last name, but you should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Those individuals asking for a second access never mentioned that the strip of land for a second access plows through Haven Family House Homeless Shelter. At the moment, this strip of land is a garden with trees, shrubs, benches, and a meandering path. The garden is lovely and used by the residents of the shelter. It would be a shame to lose a garden and build an asphalt road, increasing pollution, heat, and lowering the quality of life and care Haven Family House provides. I was told by my city councilman that life moves. Who owns the shelter chose the site at the end of Van Buren Road because it is a dead end. Haven Family House is a sensitive site that does not need any outside disturbances. Also never mentioned is a second access road will send traffic, traffic that has never existed into the flood triangle neighborhood. A part of the neighborhood is a pedestrian bridge across 101 and the Iris Lane Gate to Flood Park. Cars and bikes and pedestrians don't mix. A second access will send more cars into the mix. According to the staff report, the submittal package crosses every T and dots every I. Please approve this project tonight so the apartments can be built. As a side note, when I look at the design of the project, I don't understand how a second access is going to work. It's a parking lot. You can't put a road through a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
The next person that I have is Wendy Schindler. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin. Oh, I guess she lowered her hand, never mind. The next person that I have is Karen Grove. You should be able to unmute yourself, and your time will begin.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Karen Grove, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the community group Menlo Together. Menlo Together envisions a city that is integrated and diverse, multi-generational, and environmentally sustainable. In strong alignment with our vision, we are writing, we're not writing, I'm reading. I'm, we are urging you to support the proposal to build 88 new affordable homes at 320 Sheridan Road. Others have spoken beautifully about the benefits of this project, so I'll just quickly recap. We need more affordable homes in Menlo Park. Legally and morally, we need many, many more affordable homes like these 88 homes. Menlo Park is one of the most expensive places in the country to live, and teachers and school staff cannot afford it. And communities do better when teachers can live in them. And communities do better when teachers can live in them. And Jefferson School District offered affordable homes in the last few years to its teachers and staff, and recruitment and retention skyrocketed as a result. This project is an investment in the future of Menlo Park children. It's important to remember that half of the Ravenswood School District families live in Menlo Park. So when, as I said, when teachers live near their place of work, kids learn better and communities benefit. So improving approving this project is investing in the future of our kids. And finally, these are new affordable homes in a high opportunity neighborhood in Menlo Park, which is something we haven't done in a while. It affirmatively furthers fair housing and makes a small dent in our history of national, state, and local governments, including our own, creating segregated communities. So these 88 homes move us in the right direction, and I urge you to support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
The next commenter that I have is Kevin Rennie. You should be able to unmute yourself and your time will begin.
Chair Schindler, commission members and staff. I'm Kevin Rennie from the Willow's Neighborhood. Wanted to just comment that I'm in favor of this project. Much needed housing project. The one couple notes that I have, I do encourage more bicycle parking closer to meeting the city's code that's laid out. It's way far behind, at least how I've how I've read it. It is the location is not close to mass transit. It's tucked away. And it it seems like it would be quite difficult to actually get out, and it would add traffic to Bay Road and also Ringwood, which currently have studies ongoing because there's so much traffic there currently. And then the comments of the developer saying that they would add facilities later on. I just don't think that to be true. If there's no facilities, people aren't going to bike. So I've I understand the cost. But I fully encourage a secondary review to add more protected bike parking to encourage people to ride. Second note, the pollution mitigation from 101. There's probably little kids and families right next to 101. The EPA makes some recommendations about greater vegetation barriers in addition to physical barriers. It would be great to see, at least when I looked at landscaping, there's not really any large trees or anything. So I would like a second look at that to prevent asthma from children and other other people. And also the note on two or three commentators ago, commented on half the apartments being one bedroom instead of two or three bedrooms. I would like to see if there's the math behind it. But I do strongly encourage, we need, we need more families in Menlo Park that we can share this great community with. And I would encourage looking at that ratio again and hopefully getting more two or three unit complexes. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you for your comment.
At this time, I don't see any additional hands raised, and I have no additional comment cards for in person. We have one additional hand raised. Wendy Schindler, you should be able to unmute yourself and your time will begin.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. One second. So good evening, planning commission. My name is Wendy Schindler, and I'm a resident of Flood Triangle. We're excited and impressed with the progress that's been made in delivering 100% affordable housing project for Ravenswood City teachers and others eligible, other eligible individuals from the Menlo Park community. Huge appreciation in particular goes out to Steve Spielberg, his design team and his firm for their willingness to hear community input and adjust their design from a single tall building to three shorter buildings and taking into consideration the look and feel of the neighborhoods that will be that will welcome the new neighbors. Our hope, our hope. Sorry. I'm here tonight, though, to to comment on the request for a second access road to be added to the affordable housing development. A little background. For those of you who are who are unfamiliar with Haven Family House Charter, Haven Family House provides interim shelter and supportive services to 23 families experiencing homelessness in Menlo Park. Haven Family House also serves up to nine veteran families every night. So the physical reality of a cut through in the place that is being a second access road in the place it's being proposed. Van Buren Dead Ends at Haven Family House. It has never been connected to the former Flood School site. Access to the school site was always through Suburban Park. And for all those years without objection from the neighbors. This changed in 2011 when the school was permanently shuttered. Should Suburban Park has experienced a sort of cul de sac existence since the school closed. So they are not happy about the reintroduction of more cars to their neighborhood. They would refer that the traffic be redirected to the Triangle by way of Van Buren. Unfortunately, doing so will have direct negative effect on the shelter and its clients. William Egger was quoted as saying the new affordable housing development will generate far less traffic than was typical for the former school. So to be clear, the proposal would create a second access road for the housing development by pushing through the dead end and demolishing and paving over a really lovely little garden planted there by canopy. A new road at this location would introduce a steady stream of traffic, noise, and additional asphalt pollution directly in front of the shelter right beneath client windows. The shelter does not have the air purifying system, noise management, and other environmental protections that the new housing developments will have to protect it from from these various sorts of pollution. A side note, the site has not been designed in a way that enables the traffic to be split between Suburban Park and Flood Triangle, as was proposed by a formal council member. In particular, having broken the site into three buildings, there is no physical way to create a middle point and divide the traffic. The impact of this access road to Haven House. The Haven Family House is a part of the Flood Triangle neighborhood. The shelter has been part of our neighborhood for decades now, and they have been a good neighbor. They don't deserve the intrusion a cut through access road would cause for their clients. A road through the Haven House site would irrevically just irrevocably disrupt the calm, quiet, private, and protective environment purpose made for the clients of the shelter. It would be unconscionable and deeply disrespectful to force an access road in this place. We hope you will consider the impact of placing a second access by Haven House and consider other options for a second access. Thank you for your consideration and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment.
At this time, I see no additional hands raised online, and I have no additional comment cards for in person.
Thank you very much. Given that, I will go ahead and close public comment on item F1. And that means we will move now into commission discussion and ultimately emotion with regard to the use permit, architectural control, and BMR agreement. Commissioners, with questions, discussion points? Commissioner Berusi.
I wanted to address the access point thing because I think this has been a really difficult topic for a long time. And I actually wrote a public email back in 2022 to county and local officials asking about the different options. At the time, I thought it seemed fair and preferable to have as many different access routes as possible. And I was particularly keen on exploring the idea of an access route through the park to Iris, because I agree that it doesn't make sense really to route traffic past Haven House. It is a sensitive community, and they do deserve to have their piece. That was pretty widely shut down. And at the time, I also heard from council members that they'd heard the same thing, that the county had unfortunately just gone through a big EIR process, a big SEQA process to redevelop Flood Park, that they were not interested in delaying the redevelopment of the park and that they were not keen on it. There were issues with the water district, et cetera, et cetera. And so that door was slammed. I personally am curious to hear what other people think. I'm sensitive to the desire to have an extra access point. But I'm I'm more concerned about this project not getting funded, and I think we need to move forward with it. And so the fact that Caltrans has been unresponsive to residents who've been asking about, you know, exploring that option doesn't seem very hopeful to me that there is some Narnia-like other place that we could send cars out through. So for that, I want to talk about the bike stuff. I know we've, a lot of us have hit this. As somebody who lives nearby, as somebody who's biked this area frequently and knows about the destinations that people are likely to go to, I think it's really, really important that you have secure, weatherproof bike storage that is ground level accessible ideally for lots of residents. And unfortunately, outdoor bike parking, the kind you would see downtown, where you just have like those rings, that's not really the kind that people need for their homes. It's great for people who are stopping for a couple of hours, but it doesn't, it doesn't protect bikes in inclement weather, and it doesn't really keep them from being stolen, as I learned to my chagrin over and over again. So I would, I think there are two things. One is, one is figuring out how to come up with some more flexible bike storage, recognizing that people are going to probably have e-bikes, and maybe they can charge them at work. But there there needs to at least be a covered space for them. I noticed that you have the communities, the shared community space, perhaps thinking about how that could be flexibly rededicated in the future. If it turns out that a lot of people do have bikes that they need to store and charge somewhere would be something to consider. The other thing I noted in the in the transportation demand management analysis, it kind of looked like I saw a route out on Van Buren for bikes down to the train station. And as I understand it, that would not be an official route. I mean, you're going to have a locked fire gate there. So I want to lean really heavily on this idea of ensuring that you're going to have access through the park. I know that it won't be accessed through the park at all hours because the park gets locked. But I can't emphasize enough how much of a quality of life improvement that that would be for the residents. It really doesn't make sense to have somebody bike all the way out through Suburban Park and then all and then make a left turn on Bay Road during traffic, and then all the way down Bay Road, and then all the way down to the bike. You know, it's, it's, it's going quite far out of one's way. And many of the destinations that are going to be most appealing for residents are the schools that their kids will go to, which are in the Bell Haven District, a lot of them. The new Bell Haven Community Center and workplaces that a lot of residents will be going to, which are Ravenswood District Schools, which are all over that bike bridge. So it's really adding a lot of, I just, I want to really hammer that point and make sure that if the county is being at all vague about this, please lock them down, get it in writing, make sure that that's possible. And then I wanted to actually suggest something else. As a neighbor of Flood Park, which is getting really, really awesome, I think it's a little bit of a shame that all of the people that live nearby, I can access it from Iris. I think people from Suburban Park right now can't access it from anywhere in their neighborhood. They have to go out to Bay Road. Am I right about that? Okay, so another thing that I think would be really good would be for the access point that eventually happens in the Sheridan Road development to be accessible, not just to people who live in that development, but to people who live on Hedge Road and live on Greenwood and on other neighborhood streets so that kids don't have to go out on a busy road to get to the park. And then I think that will also probably foster a little bit more integration into the neighborhood. And it will probably also be a safer route, again, for those same kids who might want to be going to swim lessons in the Bell Haven Community Center to be able to do that without going way out of their way. So those are the requests that I would personally make. I think it's a great development. I really appreciate all the collaboration that's gone into the work with the different communities. And and I'm excited to vote to approve it tonight. But I want, I really want you to focus on that transportation demand management and very specifically bike scooter parking. And and again, nice try with the outdoor bike parking, but I think that's probably not going to get used as much as some things that are covered and secure would. Thanks.
Commissioner Silverstein.
So I wrote down what I wanted to say so I don't forget things and have a cohesive train of thought. I'm, I'm very torn with this project. I am so supportive of affordable housing and I'm sympathetic to the concerns and public comments that we've heard from those in Ravenwood School District today. I'm also very concerned with the extremely long time that it takes to get these developments approved and would hate to contribute to any further delays. And every part of me wants to just approve this project as quickly as possible. That being said, I am very concerned about the lack of any real bike parking for this project. So many of the concerns that neighbors have for this and really any housing project that we hear on the Planning Commission relate to traffic. Traffic is a huge burden to close neighbors and is honestly a significant part of the reason why so many of these types of projects have controversy in the first place, is neighbors worrying about traffic. And the only way we can reduce that is by encouraging more people to take alternative forms of transportation. Given the close proximity to the 101 pedestrian and bike bridge, it's actually faster to bike to Bell Haven than it is to drive there from this location, especially during commuting hours. So the current proposal states that there are going to be 88 long term bicycle parking spaces provided. But I would posit that they're actually providing none. The specific building standards from Calgreen states that bicycle parking must be at street level, not up three flights of stairs, not through an apartment, and not tucked away in a balcony. So I spoke with this about this with a developer about 10 months ago when I first saw the project plans. And I know that many other people have mentioned it, not only tonight, but also in different meetings as well. And after all of that, so far, what we've seen is four bike storage lockers for for 88 units. So I totally appreciate that this is going to cost something. But I know that the overall expected cost to the project is about 66 point or 63.77 million dollars. So any incremental costs to providing crucial bike storage would amount to maybe 0.1%. The project also is currently proposing to have five more car parking spots than the minimum requirement, which you could theoretically go below, but is now 128 bike parking spots below the minimum storage requirements there. So all that said, I'm very supportive of the project, but I would actually want to insist on including a formal contingency of providing long term bike storage for future residents. I recognize that the developer mentioned they plan to be reactive to the needs of the community, but I don't find that sufficient. One, once they're there and being used, it's much harder to get rid of car parking spots than it would be at the beginning. And two, we're also introducing a selection bias where people who have bikes or want to e-bike or want to bike to work or school might not choose to live here in the first place because they don't actually have anywhere to park it. And then you just have a self fulfilling prophecy of seeing a community that doesn't bike anywhere, and it's not a function of what could have been. So those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Farak.
Thank you. Like some other commissioners, I also have several notes, many questions, et cetera. I've been loosely tracking this project for quite some time, too, along with Commissioner Berusi when we were pre commissioners or I was, I guess, between commissioning, having discussions around it. So I have a whole summary section, but I wanted to start with just a few questions just that came up as I was reading the staff report. One of the biggest ones, I think, should be for staff, but it may be for the applicant, is why didn't this project study the most impacted intersections that this project will contribute to, namely Bay at Ringwood, and instead focused on other intersections that aren't as consequential to the function of the overall traffic patterns of this most impacted traffic neighborhood?
I'll try to answer that question. So the the TIA you're referencing was part of the SEQA analysis. That has to comply with the city's TIA guidelines. Those intersections were vetted by the the Transportation Division. Those were the intersections that they determined needed to be studied for this particular project. So that, and those are the intersections that Hexagon Those are the intersections that Hexagon moved forward with.
That's just my comment to that, would be that that's very unfortunate, because that is by far the most concerning intersection, and it wasn't studied. But I already know, as even Commissioner Beruzzi pointed out, and wholeheartedly agree that having someone have to take this very circuitous route along the long way and then contribute to an already five-to-10-minute delay at that intersection when it's peak morning hours, and then in certain afternoons in peak traffic times. Just, it's wild to me that, given the 800-plus-page report, that that wasn't one of the studied things. And I'll leap to a really small, picky thing, but as I kind of leafed through all of that information that I felt like we were getting deluged with, and I'm not sure why, I noticed our own address and name, and I just was curious, so I guess this is an applicant question, why did you feel like it was important to include all the names and some phone numbers of residents of that neighborhood in the packet? It's in the technical appendices. I happen to appear on page 787.
Through the chair, if you could go to the microphone, for those folks that are remote.
I apologize, because I'm not sure which you're referring to.
Oh, it's just in the extensive appendices of documents that we all got in our staff report. It's many, many hundreds of pages long, and all a bunch of Suburban Park and Terminal Ave and surrounding neighborhood homes, addresses, and owners at that time are listed. And I just was curious why I've never seen that.
My team doesn't seem to know either. Do you know if it was in one of the reports, like maybe one of the third-party reports?
Sure. If you scroll down to the 700s, you'll start seeing all these lists in, yeah, like I'm on 787, just, you know, that's where our home address is, so.
So I think, just perhaps for context, this would be, if I'm correct, an exhibit to Attachment A in the staff report, so it is Exhibit N, which is the Phase 1 Environmental Site Assessment.
EDR, City Directory, from many years ago.
So I still don't know, but I'll say that, you know, the Phase 1 is the environmental site assessment, and so that's us paying a third-party organization to ensure there are no environmental issues. And the Phase 1 is essentially a desk assessment, where they go through all the history. I don't know why any addresses appear there, but I imagine we wanted to include the entire report, including all the appendices.
I hope they didn't charge you by the page. So, okay, so then a couple other questions. Maybe I'll try to find a couple more applicant ones while you're up here. Curious, given the Ravenswood School District owns the parcel, why did the superintendent have to speak at public comment rather than as the applicant?
Well, they're not the applicant. So we are the applicant. We are the long-term lessee of the site. There'll be a ground lease with them. So I consider them our partner, but we are going to be the owner of the building, not the land, and who all the agreements would be with. So they are not part of the entity that's actually applying for entitlements or anything.
Okay. And then, just kind of curious, I know you were trumpeting the green building standards, but LEED Silver is kind of the California Building Standard. I just wanted to kind of put that out there. It's not like a special sustainability play, but, so I just wanted to verify that that's your understanding, too, that LEED Silver is approximately equivalent to the California Building Standards?
We will likely be a minimum of LEED Silver. What we, I guess, specifically got a waiver on, if I'm using the right term, is the actual certification of LEED. That adds about $60,000 extra to the cost of the project, but just being a California tax credit project, we're generally subject to so many things on top of local building code, that we're, almost all of our projects tend to be at least gold just by following the rules.
That's good to hear, and I totally am fair enough on not going through the certification. That is costly, and you spend a lot on the environmental studies, that didn't study the most impacted intersection. Curious about the request for a low-cost measure of not adding the two-inch recessed windows. That caught my eye, because the buildings, I understand the inspiration for the architecture, kind of that vertical battened board, but without some of the details, the buildings just may not age well. Without that, it reminded me of what I grew up in, a 1970s vertical siding, no recessed window kind of thing. And so I'm just curious, it doesn't at all then remind me of the neighboring houses when it doesn't have certain kind of finishing details that I would be surprised add that much to the cost?
It's a great question. I think what we're missing in that dialogue is the sense that every window's going to have trim around it. So there'll be a reveal there, but the way that the design guideline is written in the municipal code is that there's a recess on the wall plane of two inches. And what we're doing is to make sure that every window has a trim around it, so it does not have that aluminum window kind of clean stucco look that you probably are envisioning when you're thinking about it from the 60s and 70s. It's not that. It's more of a modern farmhouse look. So every window will have some sort of trim relief on there, which, when you actually look at it, it's going to be about an inch and 3/4, which is not two inches technically.
Well, that's good to hear.
We have to say what we're not meeting, so that's one of those items. And just to kind of circle back on your address question, it has to do with the list of residents within a certain radius of that, and on that particular appendices that has all those names and addresses on there.
Yeah, I've just never seen that, and it was dating back to the, many, many decades ago, and then 2014, and I was like, it just was a lot of superfluous information, and not an impact study on the most impacted intersection. That's why I saw it, because I was looking very hard for that.
I got a text message chime in from one of my associates that's watching on video tonight. We believe that that was the required radius that they were required to notice at the time.
At the time of the demolition of Flood School?
No, no, at the time that they did the environmental site assessment.
But it was all old, like it was from a 2014 residential list. It was fun to see old neighbors. I wonder where some of them went. But, anyway, okay, it's okay. I just wanted to, I've literally never seen it. I've been on the commission in aggregate 10 years, and it's the first project I've seen such a list, so. So, okay, thank you. And yes, there are some things I really like about the architecture, and the site plan is one thing I wanted to call out, is something that I like. So I'm going to pivot to a few staff questions. So to staff, with the parking requirements and the lack of bike parking and the therefore probable increase in parking demand because of the need for residents to drive everywhere, the study had said that it will be underparked by roughly 40 to 50 cars. Right now, there's an overnight prohibition on on-street parking. Is that going to continue?
So the prohibition on overnight parking would be, it would need to be amended by the city council if that's what they wanted to do. So as far as enforcement of the existing code, it would remain applicable.
But what if the neighborhood with the streets wanted to retain that prohibition, but the residents of the project don't have enough room to park their cars, and the applicants are taking a reactive approach, which may not be sufficient?
Maybe I'll start if I understand correctly. So I think before the commission this evening, the city, as Commissioner Farrak mentioned, has a prohibition on overnight parking in residential zoning districts. And so that's not subject to any discussion this evening. There's no discussions that I'm aware of, of modifying that citywide or neighborhood by neighborhood. So I think for the sake of the commission's discussion and deliberation this evening and evaluation, it would be with the assumption that that is to remain. And because that will remain, the project itself would have to accommodate its parking onsite. And so that certainly is a consideration for the developer and the operator of the site in terms of making sure that they have enough parking to park onsite. I think it's a good reminder, and I'm sure the developer is aware that the city does have that prohibition in the neighborhood, and so there certainly isn't that escape valve, if you will. If there is any parking constraints onsite, the project will have to manage its parking for its residents without relying on the neighborhood.
Great, thank you. And then just for the applicant, is that your understanding, too, that if the 88 units drives more than 116 spots, i.e. they own that many cars, how would you handle that?
Yeah, I mean, this is going to be a managed site, like the gentleman just said here. And so that's going to be part of the vetting process in terms of having tenancy for the space to make sure that all the parking is resolved onsite, both bike parking and vehicular parking. Yeah, it's a managed site.
And what about visitor parking or guest parking?
That's baked into the allocations, and then where we have discrepancies between the municipal code and what we require from an operational standpoint, we've applied for a waiver.
You've applied for a waiver?
Yes.
What does that mean?
That means we have requested from the city that they relinquish a requirement or reduce a requirement to allow for us to put the affordable housing in place.
Sorry, the one, yeah, that one, I thought it was like a waiver to not have to limit the number of cars being stored on property by residents. You will do that, because that's managing the site?
Yeah, that's managing the site, correct.
Got it, thank you. So from what I understand, as the Ravenswood School District explored various sites, what various uses for their property, this is harkening back to that 2014 to 20 timeframe, the reason that they weren't allowed to use it for a school was due to air quality concerns, since it's right against the freeway. Is that correct? Is that?
I don't know the answer to that. Maybe somebody from our staff could answer that question. This is Will.
Good evening. My name's William Ingram. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations for the School District. I think that's a little bit of a common misunderstanding. The district would not be able to purchase the site due to its proximity to the highway, but because it is currently a site and was formerly a school site, you would be able to rebuild a school on that property.
Why not?
Sometime between when the district acquired the site in the early 1900s and 2014, when they closed the school, the state of California imposed additional rules around site acquisition and proximity for highways and other areas.
So there's a law that, like if the school district owns a property adjacent to a freeway, and they close the school, they have to not open it again?
No. Say the site belonged to the city of Menlo Park, and the city of Menlo Park said, hey, Ravenswood City School District, would you be interested in purchasing this site? We, in my understanding of the law, would not be able to purchase that site. However, because we have owned the site for a long time, if we would like to build a school on that site, there's no prohibitions for us doing so. And so we explored building another school on that site, and we have no reasons why we could not, from a legal or operational perspective. We chose not to for other reasons.
Okay, so, okay, so I guess I was misunderstanding. I thought you were saying there was some prohibition about being able to use it as a school site?
No, we were able to use a school site. We would not be able to purchase it if we did not already own the land and help a school site on that.
Okay. And why would you not be able to purchase it if you didn't already own the land?
I don't know the specifics of the, we've never looked into buying that site, I'll tell you.
Right, 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 okay.
But my understanding is the state has set up different rules around proximity to different things.
Okay. Because, yeah, and I think that's where the lore came from, was that because there's always, any freeway everywhere, there's air quality issues, you know, on that strip adjacent to it. But it sounds like it may not be the sole reason. Thank you for clearing that up, sort of, but, I mean, at least clearing it up from the extent that it is not necessarily verified that that's the reason. Got it, thank you. And then, actually, I might have you return again, sir, if you don't mind. How many teachers and staff work for the Ravenswood School District?
Yeah, about 300 staff members.
Great, thank you. I think that's it for school district questions. Thank you, glad you're here. Let's see. Also, before I go into my summary section, I just wanted to note, I'm a board member for an affordable housing finance nonprofit, Housing Trust Silicon Valley. I represent my employer. As a member of Bay Area Council, there was a public speaker to that effect. And I'm also part of Menlo Spark Advisory Board, which drives initiatives such as electrification to help Menlo Park become carbon neutral. Just FYI, it all comes together. So as a housing champion, I really welcome the concept of this project to the city. And as a planning commissioner, it's incumbent on this body to ensure we don't simply rubber-stamp it because it's much-needed housing for teachers that we all, of course, want and love, but it needs to be a good project that works for the city, because we need to ensure that adding a significant amount of housing works for everyone with thoughtful planning requirements so that more future projects can also be accommodated. As it relates to this project, there is a lot to like, in particular, that it will support Ravenswood teachers. They'll enjoy adjacency to Flood Park, which is being improved right now, and I can't wait for the shiny grand opening, hopefully later this year. In general, I like the site plan and the architectural inspiration. I've already discussed my now-mitigated concerns about some of the window recessing details. Thank you. And, you know, as we know, this project qualifies for the waivers and incentives, but most any other project, any of them would be needing adjustment, like we would require those to be adjusted. So, but even that said, you know, what's really above all is the lack of providing a second ingress egress to Van Buren. It just demonstrates a lack of understanding of where the traffic patterns and impacts come from. Even the data table in the staff report didn't mention it, the intersection that is most challenged. It must be worked out. We must weigh what would be a better condition, not for either neighborhood on adjacent sides, but what would be better for the residents of this new community. And that's accessibility, that's safety, that's being able to get where they're going, whether it's by car, on bike, on foot, as efficiently as possible. Thus, I do plan to support the BMR agreement. I currently can't make the negative declaration for SEQA, and so I hope that, given that there's room for more hearings, but a timely nature of trying to make sure you can get your finance round, do your tax credits, I do hope that we will consider as a body continuing this project for further work on access points, vehicle, you know, non-vehicular transportation circulation. The city attorney, hi, welcome back. I noticed, said earlier that we have 60 days beyond the SEQA approval to approve the use permit. So I look forward to approving this project when we can be assured of a timeline for a second access point through the Caltrans right-of-way onto Van Buren. And just a couple notes, that is a right-of-way. It is not owned by Life Moves. It is not through the community, the Life Moves community. It's adjacent to it on the freeway. There's no residential driveways other than Life Moves that faces Van Buren, and it provides direct access much closer to 101 without impacting all the residential streets that are between the project and almost down to, it's behind the VA where Van Buren meets with Bay, closer to the oil changer. So it's a commute I'm very familiar with, because I live in Suburban Park. I commute to Santa Clara on Bay Road every day, and I have to spend about half of that commute waiting to get to past Ringwood, and then the other half, the other, all the miles. So this is something that I want this project to work well for everybody, and in particular, the residents. well for everybody, and in particular, the residents. So there's where I'm sitting right now.
Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you, and thank you, fellow commissioners and the public, for the discussion this far. Just, my general comment is, I think it's great that the Ravenswood School District has decided to use their land in this way. They looked at what their needs were and saw this need for housing closer to Works, and so many teachers and staff are commuting from really far away. I heard Stockton, Tracy, Modesto, et cetera, just to, you know, teach students in our local community, which is a really long drive. And as someone who used to have long commutes in Los Angeles, I can sympathize with the stress of a long commute. It is not fun. And given that this site being zoned as it is now is the result of a long housing element process that had a lot of community input, and I realize this was a contentious site, but ultimately, this is where we landed. I also commend the community for, you know, I saw a few emails in the packet from a while back of people saying no to the project, but generally, all the comments today have been in favor of the project besides some details. So our community recognizes the need for this housing as well, which is really, I think, great to hear. I share some of the concerns about transportation and parking and such as the other commission members. I did want to just clarify through the chair with staff and maybe the city attorney. I did send an email early today to staff just wondering, you know, we already had some questions earlier about deadlines and state laws. Since there seems to be some appetite to add perhaps some conditions to the approval or something like that, I was just wondering, my understanding from staff is that with the, since the applicant has access to unlimited waivers, what room do we have to add any new conditions or adjust some of the details of the project, such as bike parking or access, if we choose to try to do that tonight?
Leila, if you'd be able to chime in on that one?
Absolutely. I just didn't want to cut you off. Thank you through the chair, Leila Westerfield, National, the city attorney's office. So generally, in terms of conditions of approval for this project, what we're looking at is, you know, reasonable, generally, we want to first take a look at any conditions that would impact or make him feasible, the waivers or incentives that the applicant has requested. And secondly, with respect specifically to the waivers, we want to be very careful about any conditions of approval that might prevent the project from being constructed as designed and at the density proposed. And so one of the waivers that has been requested is the waiver for long-term bicycle parking. The applicant has asserted that the requirement, that the provision of long-term bicycle parking through the storage facilities would preclude the development of the project at the density proposed and as designed. And so, you know, generally, as we're thinking about any potential conditions of approval beyond, obviously, the general nexus and proportionality requirements that we always want to have, we want to also be thinking about, with respect specifically to the density bonus, the applicability of density bonus law to the project, that we're thinking about whether or not a condition of approval might impact the feasibility of the project, might conflict with a requested incentive or waiver, or otherwise impact the project as designed and at the density proposed.
Thank you. So just to clarify, yes, since there was a waiver requested for long-term bike parking, does that essentially mean that any conditions of approval in that realm are unlikely to be acceptable because that would conflict with the waiver? Like if we, for example, it sounds like there might be appetite for asking for more long-term bike parking than is currently proposed. Would that not be kosher? Because it would go against the waiver that the applicant's already requested. And a follow-up question is, since the applicant has access to unlimited waivers, if there is something outside of something that's already been requested as a waiver, and then we add a new condition, could that be then waived after the fact by the applicant?
Right. So the key thing to keep in mind is whether or not the condition would impact or impact the feasibility of the project as it is currently designed. And so we, the redesign of a project, any condition that would require the redesign of a project would potentially run afoul of that requirement. As to, you know, specific conditions related to how the bikes are stored or where the bike storage is located, you know, that's certainly a request that the planning commission can make of the applicant, and the applicant can, you know, provide information as to whether or not that would be feasible for them to implement.
That's slightly confusing because I believe you said any something requiring a redesign would run afoul of the requirement, but then I also heard you say that, for example, changing how the bikes are stored could potentially be workable, but wouldn't that be a redesign of the project? Since in the presentation, they showed exactly where the bike parking is going to be and what it's going to look like.
Well, yeah, there's, there's sort of a kind of gradation between what requires a redesign of the project versus what could be a condition of approval as to, you know, how the bikes are stored or perhaps where they're located. But again, it would sort of be up to the applicant to let us know whether or not that's feasible or whether that would in fact require a redesign of the project. And most importantly, whether or not that requirement or that condition would impact the density of their project as designed. So it's really going back to kind of the density of the project and how they've configured the site in order to allow for their proposed density.
Got it. And, yeah, I guess a quick follow-up question would be, you know, regarding these waivers, my understanding is the waivers are being requested by the applicant because without the waivers, the applicant is saying it would physically preclude the project at the provided density. So these waivers are needed to build the project at the density being proposed. What is, I guess, are we taking the applicant's word for all of those waivers being necessary? Is that within the public, the planning commission's purview to, I guess, question those things? Or is that, you know, we basically have to trust the applicant that this is what's required?
Yeah. So generally, in order to challenge the request of such a waiver, the city would have to be able to establish that the project would be possible. But again, that would likely require a redesign of a project, which recent case law has indicated is not allowed. And so it is really kind of up to the applicant to be able to establish, you know, this is how we've designed the project, this is the density that we propose, this is how we've proposed to make it work, and these are the waivers that will need to get it done. And you're right, it's really about more of the physical site and whether or not things can be made to fit and where they can be made to fit. And generally, that goes back to how the project has been designed in order to fit all of the components.
Okay, thank you. And with all due respect to the applicant, I'm a trust but verify kind of person, so it's not that I don't trust you, it's just kind of how I like to operate. Okay, thanks. So, yeah, my general comments in terms of the project is, yeah, I agree that, given where it is, and given that we know that most of the residents will be working for the Ravenswood School District, which is right on the other side of 101, it does seem like a great opportunity, given that there's already a pedestrian overpass right there next to the project, to really encourage either walking to a bus, because from what I saw in the transit analysis, or sorry, the traffic analysis, as well as just like Samtrans maps, there are a couple of bus routes that serve all the schools that stop right there on the other side of 101. And we also talked about bike access as well. So I do think that should be ideally emphasized further in terms of focusing on how to give, incentivize the residents to either walk and take the bus or use their bikes to commute to work to reduce traffic on local streets. So specifically, in terms of access to Flood Park, I was looking at Google Street View of the Flood Park parking lot, which is dated back to 2008 for some reason. And it shows clearly an access to the school from Flood Park. So I think that access should be still there. I'm assuming it was closed when the school was shut down, but you can see it was there, a big old walkway from the school to Flood Park and back. So that would make it easier for residents to get into Flood Park and then take the bike path out to Van Buren. Ideally, I think it would be nice to have access to Van Buren directly from the fire gate area, but that might be an issue with the homeless housing next door. And regarding transit, I think that I saw that the applicant has planned to offer Caltrain Go Passes, but since, again, we know that most of the people living there are going to be working around the other side of 101, Caltrain really doesn't seem helpful, whereas Samtrans seems very helpful, the bus specifically. So I would really like to see a more focus on that. In terms of parking, it, I guess, the site plan in general just looks like a big concrete parking lot, which doesn't excite me. I do think it's great to have the open space with the playground and green space. That'll be really nice. And of course, it's right next to a huge park. But that kind of, as Commissioner Silverstein was saying, it sort of sets the tone for the residents as, and here's a huge parking lot, you should live here and park your car. I don't think I'd want to do any sort of large redesign, like the city attorney was saying, but again, anything we can do to incentivize people not driving, perhaps charging for parking or something else. I do think more sheltered bike storage on the first floor would be very good. So that's kind of where I stand. I don't have any other major concerns about this project, and I do think it's a great project for the community, and I look forward to supporting it in general, and want to hear what other commissioners have to say. Thanks.
Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. A lot of what I wanted to say has been said already. Thank you to my fellow commissioners, and in particular, Commissioner Sellen already asked a lot of my questions with regards to the legal ramifications of asking for various changes, so I won't re-ask those. I'll just simply say, the need for housing in our community, I think, has been not only well documented in this process, in this meeting, but is codified in the city's goals and has been well spoken to. I was particularly hit with the public comments from Ravenswood City's school leaders and staff tonight. I want to state that I am in favor of whatever additional bicycle parking can be added to the site. I think for reasons of traffic mitigation, it's clear that that would help, and I would encourage that. I would encourage as much pedestrian bicycle access out to Van Buren as possible for reasons already stated, access to Flood Park. I think all of those are really important. In general, I will say that both for, both because I think this project holds critical importance for the city and because of the legal risk in anything we do to delay this project any further, I am interested in what other commissioners think. I am personally extraordinarily loath to ask anything of the developer at this point because of the importance of this project to the city and the risk in not approving it. I think there are very good points made about access. I think there are very good points made about bicycle parking. I think there are very good points made about traffic. And the reality of where we sit as a planning commission is that we often have to decide, not even decide, we just often have to make decisions that can't satisfy all of these priorities. And I think for various reasons, I feel that it's incumbent upon me to support this project because of the, because the need for housing is so incredibly acute and dire and important. So that's where I sit right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Eric and other commissioners. I'll attempt to be brief because you've all been eloquent, and a number of great questions and great points have been made already. As commissioners and members of the public have said, this project provides much-needed affordable housing, needed legally, needed morally, especially for teachers. There were some very powerful stories in the public comment that I think just really told the story most eloquently. As others have mentioned, I am particularly heartened that we've heard really no commentary that explicitly opposes the entire project, which is a tremendous shift, a much greater shift than I might have anticipated 30 months ago when many voices opposed it. It gives me great hope to see how, with the passing of time and careful iteration of plans and the incorporation of community feedback, that a development of this high level of local support has been the outcome. Regarding the specifics of the proposal, the nature of and sort of the reasons for the waivers and the incentives were pretty clear to me, and the places where I was a little vague, my fellow commissioners have asked great clarifying questions, and we've gotten great information from the applicant and from staff just to get to the details. I also definitely appreciate that under the state density bonus, the waivers and the incentives are essentially, these are my words, non-negotiable. And in case of the waivers, unlimited. I think that great points have been made, as my other commissioners, particularly Vice Chair Eric has said here, have been made. Great points have been made about trying to get more creative with encouraging bicycle use, specifically through parking, through places for storage and access, access through the park and then potentially access through that, at some point, the emergency exit, the emergency access point back in Van Buren by Haven House. I am still not certain whether you can walk through that, that particular exit, but I understand that that may actually evolve over time. I hope that the applicant takes all these ideas into consideration, but I'm not at all comfortable with adding them as requirements for approval of the project. I think that the importance of delivering affordable housing in a meaningful timeframe for the city, which also requires the perfect alignment and tap dance of financing that has been alluded to here, and if anybody saw sort of the details of the city council meeting where we discussed the housing availability, and the funds go up, the funds go down, the correlation between what comes from our city versus what comes from the county, when is the cycle? Is it in May? Is it in August? There's just a lot of moving pieces here. And a misstep, even sort of small for the best of reasons, I think runs a huge risk of derailing a really important project. An important project because of just the units it delivers, because of the people that it serves, because of the process that it's going through for the city, for the building this as a dialogue and a winning example for Menlo Park, I think is really important right now. And I also think it's incredibly important as a critical part of our housing element, which has also been discussed. So for all of those reasons, I am not supportive of adding any additional explicit requirements to the approval, other than the minor things that Mr. Turner, the minor word- than the minor things that Mr. Turner, the minor wording changes that Mr. Turner laid out at the very beginning in his presentation that would change the resolution. So that's where I am. Commissioner Ferrell.
Thanks. I have a question for the applicant, if that's okay, because of where all of our various comments are leading me to want to ask. So my question for the applicant is since you have a reactive wait-and-see for transportation management and a lot of our concerns are around transportation, bike, car, et cetera, my question is, whoever wants to answer it can come up. I am 100% certain, rarely could I say 100%, that the residents of this project will say, why don't you open this fire gate so I can save 10 minutes every morning and 10 minutes every evening? Will you be willing to look toward a solution with Caltrans to, because I'm assuming since it is a fire access, that it is accessible by vehicles, because it needs to be to be a fire access? Like, you know, that's, that's where I think there's like a maybe a not clear, clear understanding is that this exists right now. It's a right-of-way. You're already, you've drawn on your site plan a driveway out and a fire access. So this is very feasible. So I guess my question is, what would be the process to fulfill the eventual residents' need for this other access point to be open, fully open, bikes, cars, et cetera?
So I actually want to comment on one thing that I don't know that this matters or not, but it like kind of struck me when you mentioned it earlier, is that we are applying to housing trust. I don't know how that relationship affects what's going on right now, but-
I don't know. As a board member, I don't get involved in the transactions decisions, but I wanted to disclose it since you were talking a lot about affordable housing financing and just ensuring that, you know, I just wanted to disclose, like, I do know a few things, but not as much as you by any stretch of the imagination.
All right. And also to address like the reactive part, for parking, for access, that's really not reactive. That's part of the overall plan. That's part of what we believe is appropriate for the units and what will be needed. You know, kind of, this was asked of staff also, you know, and answered, but there's certainly no expectation that any of our residents would ever park in the neighborhood. We feel like we've got an appropriate number of spots in, on our site. And that's the more part about reacting to the needs was directly in relation to bicycle storage. You know, so that said, you know, I'm going to invite Lance back up, but as far as like, once the site is designed and operational, if we were to continue to have conversations with Caltrans, I don't, I don't even know that that's, yeah, so.
Yeah, thank you again for the questions. They're great questions. And we're as frustrated as you guys in terms of trying to get a dialogue with Caltrans to try to mitigate some of this. But just a point of clarification on that emergency vehicle access, that actually, the other side of that gate is private property. And so there's an agreement between the two landowners to allow for that EVA. So it's not a public right-of-way where we're showing that. Just plan north of the site, if you wanted, Chris, if you wanted to put the site plan up, I can kind of just clarify a little nuance there just to make sure that, because I know that there were some public speakers talking about a garden, where that garden is and as it relates to all of this. So I just want to kind of clarify some of that. Is there a pointer by chance?
I'll just add for a second, you know, I just want to say, we're open to it, you know, but I think our immediate goal is to get the project built, as some of the other commissioners said. You know, one thing I always think about is those funding cycles and making sure we hit them. But the future literal feasibility, I want Lance to weigh in on some.
Yeah, timing is everything with these things, as the chair, chairwoman, it's eloquently said, it's a dance for sure, in trying to get this funding in place. But if you look here to the upper right, plan right, right where the hand is right there, that access point actually goes right into a parking lot on a private property. If you go north of that, that is where the Caltrans area is right there, which we're not showing access to. Because of all the things we mentioned, they're not open to a dialogue with us to find it. But we are open to keep working with them to find some solution. It's not something we want to give up. We understand and we feel it. Our community members have told us, the city has mentioned it from time to time, and you guys are reiterating it. So we hear it loud and clear. But on the other end of the spectrum, we have a certain schedule that we would love to keep meeting so that we can provide this affordable housing to your city.
Thanks for the site plan. Is it feasible, that little, you know, so if the emergency access goes out on, I guess what I'm looking at, the right side of the property, is it possible for it to go out just to the top, you know, instead?
Yeah, we don't have access to that. We don't have an agreement-
With Caltrans yet, but that could be the future feasible.
Potentially, but there's a, there's a, there's a number of hurdles in doing that. And we're not, we're not saying we're not able, we're not willing to do that hurdle, but we're not even able to get a dialogue with them to start the hurdle process. So we're trying to, and we definitely reached out to them to try to open up a dialogue, but they've been-
I might encourage you to reach state representatives to help make that connection because they can usually have a little bit more of an ability to reach them.
True.
And it is an important project. And I think we've all demonstrated that there's no daylight and that we all agree that this is an important project and we want the project. It's the planning commission's responsibility to make sure it works so that we can accommodate even more beautiful projects like this. So I'm trying to do due diligence to be sure that this really will work for everyone. And I really liked Commissioner Beruzzi's comment earlier that if this were open for all, it could really, not just, it would not just mitigate traffic that the project drives, it would actually help mitigate the most impacted neighborhood in the city with a 95 traffic rating in our environmental justice element that we just adopted.
Yeah. And I completely appreciate your comments. And again, it's a balancing act between all these different competing items. There's, there's members of the community that don't want that for opposite reasons. And there was some people, some public comment to that effect about the removal of a garden, the sensitivity of that space next to the space.
Well, if the garden, if they're talking about the Caltrans right-of-way, that's, it's, it's a right-of-way-
I understand.
And it's on the freeway. It's not a bucolic garden that one sits-
I do not disagree with you.
Yeah.
If I may, we had conversations with Caltrans, in part brokered by state representatives, approximately two, three years ago before the alliance team was fully on board. So we did go through that process. It is, just to reiterate, I think some of the points made, a multi-year process. That costs, I don't remember the specifics, but at the time, it was, I think, low, single-digit hundreds of thousands of dollars to do the study and then do additional work to move the sound wall, to rebuild the sound wall, to close down 101. So, and this is speculative because the Caltrans folks aren't going to give you like a quote on the first Zoom.
No, but I don't think it would have involved the sound wall because we've measured it and it's not a, it's not too small of an area, according to the fire district.
And I can only reiterate what Caltrans said on the, on the Zoom three years ago.
Right. No, I appreciate-
So, you know, I don't pretend to be an architect. I don't pretend to have measured anything, but I'll tell you what they said. I think it's a multi-stage conversation. We have to get the city involved, obviously, and Caltrans involved. So it is, it is sort of a complicated process. I do think the site design, as they've contemplated it, does allow for that. Should the city, should Caltrans, should the fire department, everybody else involved decide to make that a right-of-way? But it is, it is an involved conversation, one that we did begin and have not followed through on several years ago, kind of waiting for the city to dictate whether or not that's-
A requirement.
-the city would like.
I would love for it to be. And I wish that it would have been followed up on two or three years ago because you'd be done now.
Commissioner Beruzzi, did you, oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to make lemonade out of these lemons. I, I fully believe that Caltrans, I mean, it's their land, they, they can be exactly as sticky and annoying to deal with as they want to be. And whether or not we've measured it and we think it could work, it's, I mean, you know how these things work. Surplus land, CCL, blah, 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 it could take years. And in the meantime, this project is, becomes financially unfeasible. I'm reading a book right now by Henry Grabar about how these kinds of things can kill affordable housing projects. And I'm sort of over that, you know, I, and I'm going to say, as somebody who studies transportation demand management, if what we really want is to reduce traffic, then adding more places for people to drive their cars out and making it faster for them to drive places is exactly the wrong approach. So let me, again, let me put the lemonade spin on this. Let's, let's put the Caltrans idea on ice for now. And again, I advocated for a second exit, too, and I did it in a very public way. And I believed in it at the time. But I think that if it's not super convenient for me to drive my car through a suburban park and wait to make a left turn on Bay and then go through that complicated intersection at Ringwood that you and I both live close to, and then deal with all of the Willow Road intersection and that stuff to get over to East Palo Alto or Bellhaven, and I've got an e-bike or even a regular human-powered bike, and I have an access point, and it's going to take me 10 minutes instead of 15 or 20, then that's the, that's the way, thing I'm going to choose to do. And so I want to make it feasible for people to make that choice because it's not just a better choice, it's a better choice for everybody. It's better for them, it's better for the environment, it's better for, for our traffic things, et cetera. So let's not make it too easy for people to drive. And along those lines, I was going to say, I don't think we've underparked it. I mean, we have, we have these ironclad rules in our city right now about no overnight parking. It basically means that whoever lives here is going to have to abide by the parking regulations. And I would even suggest, radical suggestion, unbundling the parking spaces from the units such that if there are people who want to move in there who don't have a vehicle at all, maybe they get a discount. Maybe renting, maybe what you do is you rent a parking space. You may find that you need fewer parking spaces and that you could dedicate one of, one or more of the parking spaces to more secure and safe bike storage. So I really think we need to start thinking this way if we're going to be addressing the climate crisis that we're looking at that's causing so much difficulty. I also forgot to mention when I was speaking that I did watch the fire board meeting where they talked about the second exit. I was encouraged to hear from the fire chief that they felt that the site team had worked really well with them and that they had provided this, what I understood the fire chief to say was that the current fire code doesn't even require this second emergency exit, but that that was something that these folks had added at the request, like, it was a nice to have and it got added. And also that it would be not just a viable route for fire district people to get in, but that it could be used as an evacuation route. So I feel like we're not really talking about safety here. What we're talking about is traffic. And I want to, I want to emphasize that as well because I know there were people who made comments about safety. And I understand that concern, especially given some of the horrible things we've been seeing from Southern California. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Beruzzi. Well said. Really good points. And I appreciate the additional color that you brought in from the meetings that you have attended, the public meetings that you've attended. Commissioner Silverstein.
This might be a moot point because it seems like the commission is, as a whole, not necessarily interested in imposing any extra restrictions. But this has come up more than one time on the commission around what density waivers look like. And I just wanted to get a little more clarification. I'm reading something on legislature.ca.gov that states, "In no case may a city, county, or city and county apply any development standard that will have the effect of physically precluding the construction of a development," and then it continues. And so it seems like the criteria is physically precluded, but we've also gotten the guidance that anything, under any circumstances, if it's moving a light switch from one place to another or moving a flower pot from one place to another might need a redesign and therefore not be required. And so from the guidance of how to even think about what we're here for, it would be nice to know whether or not waivers, waiver requests for BMR developments are truly absolute, set in stone, don't even consider them, or if there is wiggle room within reason, under the guise of physically preclude the construction of the development.
Through the chair, thank, thank you, Commissioner. Apologies, I don't seem to be able to turn my camera back on, but I can take a stab at answering your question. And yes, you're correct that the state law, oh, there we go. Hello. So state law does, does specifically speak to the, the waivers being necessary to prevent a project from being unfeasible at the density proposed? And then it's really case law that has since come in and kind of colored in the lines a little bit and added that language regarding, or added that kind of additional standard of the project as designed. And so that's kind of why we really want to be careful about any additional conditions or restrictions or, you know, kind of considerations of the, of the requested waivers and whether or not those conditions would require the project to undergo a redesign. The case in, in question was really, was a case down in San Diego where essentially, you know, the developer had requested certain waivers and the city was able to determine that some of the waivers wouldn't be necessary as, if the, if the applicant went ahead and redesigned their project. And the court came in and said, no, you know, no city, the, the, you must consider the project as it has been designed and the waivers are for that reason applicable to the project, not only at the density, but also as designed. So that's kind of where that comes from.
And if, if I may just add on to that, from a professional staff and not from a city attorney standpoint, I mean, I think it, it would be important for the commission to understand that our professional staff, Mr. Turner here as a project planner, we do evaluate the waivers, the concessions very thoroughly. We do ask a lot of questions of the applicant team. We do vet them before bringing them forward here. I mean, certainly understand that state law does preclude local jurisdictions from modifying or imposing a lot of changes to those conditions, really using kind of those strict findings. But we do have a dialogue with every applicant to try to ensure these are absolutely necessary. Sometimes we're able to work with applicants for modifications. I just want to take an example here. So there is a request to not pre-plumb or dual-plumb the buildings for future recycle water. We worked with the applicant to clarify that that could be exempt from the irrigation requirements. So the irrigation would be purple pipe, ready for recycle water, but not the building. So there are things that staff does through the review process with the applicant that I want to highlight here and highlight Mr. Turner's work on that. So I think that's important for the commission to understand as well. It's not, not just the paper comes in, the city brings it forward. We do vet them, challenge, if you will, for definite, for the applicant to prove to us that these are necessary. So that's not the legal side of it, but that is what staff does prior to bringing a project forward. I think that's important to highlight for context.
Thank you both. I think that's a point very well made. So the last comment that I have, and I don't know if the commission seems to be ready to put anything to a vote, would be specifically around, and I know that I'm harping on this just because it's a specific concern of mine, but the language around formally declaring that the site provides 88 long-term parking spaces. And it might just be semantic, but the CalGreen standards do currently state that our, the proposed balcony solution for long-term bike storage are insufficient. And if we want the waiver to be, to approve the entire project as designed, then so be it. But I don't think it is reasonable to state to the community, to prospective tenants, to ourselves, that we are championing bicycle commuting and providing 88 long-term bicycle storage spaces for all of these residents to be able to carry their bike up three flights of stairs without an elevator. And so I don't know if that's language that would need to be edited in the specific proposal, but I do know that many different places, it states that this is part of the actual projects. And I frankly reject that notion.
Commissioner Silverstein, I'm not totally, was there a specific question of staff as to what rewording is possible?
Yes, it would be to, if we were to approve the use permit, as stated in the staff report today, for this current application, that language around the project providing 88 long-term bicycle parking spaces in parentheses, 1- long-term bicycle parking spaces, in parentheses, one per unit, be removed, and that the waiver be to eliminate, you know, not require the bicycle parking requirements as per the city municipal code, which is one and a half bike spaces per unit, and that the waiver just be for, we're not providing long-term bike parking. If you want to put your bike on your balcony, that's fine, that's totally acceptable, we're not going to prevent you from doing so, but that we not formally state this is an official long-term bicycle parking solution, and that the project not be advertised or formally declared in our actual use permit approval that it does provide this solution because it's, it violates the expectations of what a bicycle parking space would actually be.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
I want to be sure that we have a clarity as to where the answer, an answer to that question
Yes.
would come from. And I'm assuming it is from staff.
Right, I just, my question is for Commissioner Silverstein, just to clarify the goal of the question.
Certainly.
And is it to just be authentic so that it isn't promoted as a yay, we're so bike-friendly when it's really not?
Yeah, I think to some extent it's semantic and sending a message around what this development provides. And then quite literally, it, it is literally in the packet that it says it adheres to the CalGreen standard for Class 1 bicycle storage. And so it's a matter of accuracy and as a matter of messaging as well.
Got it, thank you.
And for reference, that is on page 269 of the agenda packet where it states that it does adhere to the standards. And then if you look up chapter 5.106.4 of the CalGreen standards, it would state what the actual standards are.
So as, as I am skimming the proposed resolution that staff has crafted, it refers to, I'm going to find it again, the waiver as simply being, waiving, oh, I just lost it. There it is. The waiving the required parking, bicycle parking spaces. It does not indicate what it's providing, at least in the resolution. Which is page 93 of the staff report. Point 1B. No, that's okay. There's a lot, there's 1,500 pages. So the resolution itself does not describe the proposed bicycle parking. So then the question is, I'm wondering if there's a refinement of the question.
Meeting minutes and a note that this is how I feel. But if, if it doesn't state it in the formal resolution, then that's fine.
Okay. So I, my understanding is that, is that you're not proposing a change to the resolution, and there's not a specific change being proposed anywhere else, perhaps in, in the meeting minutes, but I think this will, the summary of the discussion points hopefully will highlight that.
Correct.
Could I ask kind of a related follow-on?
Yeah, Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. I might be city attorney, it might be Mr. Prada or Turner. What are, is our purview around adding comments or guidance that we could add to approval notes that aren't to the level of requirements or changes, but just guidance to, you know, I don't know, provide more onsite parking for bicycles, provide ample feedback for residents to explore second vehicular access? You know, think, like, guidance that would be clear what the intention of our expression was tonight, but that isn't thwarting the ability for the project to continue to move forward?
Yes, good question. So through this process, we think there is the opportunity to amend the resolution itself. You could add recitals, you know, stating whereas the planning commission, you know, values bicycle, bicycle parking wants to urge the developer to add as much bicycle parking infrastructure as possible, that sort of thing. That would be in the formal resolution that gets passed. It wouldn't end up as a condition of approval that the applicant is, you know, beholden to as part of submitting their billing permit application and complying with the conditions. But it would get across the point that the, these sentiments from the planning commission.
Through the chair, Leila Moshe-Raffinash with the city attorney's office, again, just to add to the options that Chris provided, and sorry, my camera's, oh, again, I'm allowed on the camera, perfect. So in addition to, to what, the options that Chris has laid out, you know, the commissioner comments are of course included as part of the record of proceedings on this project. And of course, you know, the, the commission can convey, urge, and encourage the applicant to, you know, take the measures that, that you have set, set out. And those would be obviously included in the record, included in some form in terms of the meeting minutes, although I don't, that, I might be into speaking there because I don't know exactly what level of detail the minutes go into, but they would certainly be included as part of the record, and I'm sure that the applicant would be hearing that.
As a follow-up, at the risk of, thank you, I think it will be, so we have an option to write a resolution, it's just that the wordsmithing of said resolution might be exceedingly challenging for a, a body such as ours, you know, to try to come up with. So, yeah, that's just my initial thought on the answer.
Through the chair, if, if I may real quick on the minutes. So we, we, as I think the commission knows, we do two different sets of minutes. For most projects, we do what are called like kind of the action minutes, which are super high-level, if you will, and then there's the summary minutes, which are more detailed despite the name of it being a summary. For this project, we, here in the commission's dialogue and discussions evening, I think we can take that away as staff, that we should prepare the summary minutes, which I think would get to a number of the items that were raised here on the dais this evening, without the potential need to craft that resolution, additional language in the resolution. So if that's acceptable to the commission, we can direct our minutes, prepare, to prepare the more typical summary long-form minutes. You know, it's that, what you see on more recommendation actions, but we can certainly do that here for this action this evening.
And then I, I believe that everyone here knows this, but when those summary minutes, the very detailed version, came before the planning commission at some point to approve them, we would have the opportunity to refine and make sure that if there were important messages that were missed or misinterpreted, we could, that those would be included. Commissioner Brusy.
I have a question to ask of staff through the chair. I'm a little confused about this. I know that with other development agreements with big companies, we have requirements for things like, and I, I see this in, in the TDM, like, you have the rubber tube, you check how many people are driving, you, you know, they have targets they're meant to hit. This is why Stanford paid me to bike to work for a really long time because they had development agreements to hit. This project is not exempt from that, right? Is there a process by which we, we, I think, there was a whole discussion about this, but I feel like we haven't talked about that much tonight, I just remember reading about it in the staff report. Do we follow up and figure out if they're actually hitting their targets of reduced trips? Everybody's looking at me like I have two heads, did I miss something really important?
No, I, I understood the question. It's a good question. So in this particular zoning district, the city code does not require formal
Got it.
No trip monitoring. It is still subject to CCAG's trip monitoring. It's a little less quantitative, more qualitative in nature. They do, you know, the applicant's required to enroll in the commute.org program and then kind of show how they're meeting their TDM measures. So it is monitored by CCAG that way, but the city wouldn't have the authority to do, you know, the hose counts of the driveway. It's not a required element of the zoning district.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could just also add to the point that, that Chris just made, the, again, the project is coming through as a Class 32 sequo exemption, and based on, you know, the infill and the kind of studies that have been done in order to support that exemption, that's kind of why you have, you know, a little bit less of the monitoring that would occur after the fact. However, the project would, and, and Chris, feel free to correct me if I'm conflating slightly, but the project would still be subject to the mitigation and monitoring measures that are part of the, the general plan EIR as well as the housing element EIR. And so anything in there related to traffic would also be complied with.
Commissioner Zellin.
Thank you. I just want to clarify because in the TDM, I remember seeing, and I found it just now on page 33, A200 of the entire packet, page 289 of the PDF, it says there's an annual driveway hose count study required. The driveway hoses will be placed for one week to track all peak hour trips, and then the driveway trip data will be provided to the city annually. So could staff confirm if that's a requirement? And then my follow-up question would be, what is done with that data? Like, if, if the numbers don't exceed some sort of threshold, does the applicant need to do anything, or is this just data collection?
Again, since there isn't a city requirement, I don't think we would necessarily collect this data. They could certainly send it to us if they want. If this is part of the CCAG's monitoring, they would send it to CCAG. And then CCAG would ensure they're meeting their, their goals.
Unrelated.
Yeah, Commissioner Farrick.
Okay. I just wanted to ask the applicant, too, I didn't mean to long ignore, but our friend from Organized Labor wanted to ask about whether this project intends to use union labor or, or not.
Not. We, we do not have that currently included in our project, no.
Vice Chair Eric.
I certainly don't mean to preclude further conversation from any commissioners, but I do feel like we've reached a point where I would feel comfortable making a motion, and then we can discuss and do whatever we want with that motion. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. I would like to make a motion that we approve this project as per the staff report and the modifications read into the record by Mr. Turner as part of the staff presentation, that staff prepare summary minutes for this meeting, and that those minutes include a note that the planning commission does not agree with the applicant's classification of Class 1 bicycle parking based on CalGreen's definition of those, of what bicycle parking is.
I will second that motion.
I have a question.
Commissioner Farrick.
So you're making a motion on a specific addition, but not on the whole use permit sequo BMR agreement? And the reason I ask is, wait, is I would like to disaggregate and make separate motions on things because there's certain things that I'll be able to support and others that I will not.
Vice Chair Eric, could you clarify your motion?
Well, I would, I think personally be happy to disaggregate as per the request of Commissioner Farrick, so give me one moment.
Yeah, through the chair, maybe if, if staff could chime in here. I think that, that may prove to be problematic this evening. So staff's recommendation is set up as a single resolution in Attachment A, where the recommendation from staff is to make the determination regarding the California Environmental Quality Act, that the project's exempt under Class 32, and then, which is the infill exemption, I should explain for folks listening online, and then make the findings and approve the entitlements, which is the use permit architectural control BMR agreement. That's set up as one single resolution with all of the kind of record and clauses as part of that, as well as all the exhibits. That's not how staff approached it this evening, and I think it would be quite problematic to separate those out into different votes, just given the fact that the entire record is set up in one resolution, one, one action by the commission. I appreciate the commission's desire to do that, that's just not how staff has typically set up these projects. And that means that I'll, I'll look to Mr. Turner or our city attorney if there's any additional items to add, but I think this evening, staff's recommendation would be to make a motion and a second and vote on the resolution in front of the commission with any amendments the commission would like to add to it, as lo, as well as the staff recommended changes from the start of the meeting.
Thank you for that clarity and understood in that case.
Yeah, so with, thank you, that very, with that additional context and taking any consideration, the dialogue among commissioners, Vice Chair Eric, could you clarify your resolution? Or clarify your, your motion?
I, okay, well, I will reiterate that, would it be possible to separate? I think that is a reasonable request that we've done on prior occasions. In the case that it is not possible or extremely difficult to separate it, which seems to be the case, then with apologies to Commissioner Farrick, I will not modify my motion and will leave it unchanged.
Okay. Thank you. And with that further clarification, I will just reiterate my second for that motion, which is to adopt the resolution as written by staff that includes the, that approves the, the use permit, the architectural control, and the low-market rate housing agreement. Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks. I would love nothing more than to support it. What would, what would help me do that is if we could also, along with the note about bicycle parking, CalGreen standards, is a, an encouragement for the applicant to pursue further work with Caltrans to determine feasibility of making the fire, the, the safety entrance, I'm sorry, I'm losing my, my verbiage at this point, the emergency access point, a more accessible entry leveraging Caltrans right-of-way. It doesn't mean it's a requirement. Don't worry. It's just to pursue the conversation.
And, thank you, Commissioner Farrick. I'm also sort of starting to not cycle as quickly. And you're talking about additional language that would explicitly be included in the, in the summary meeting notes.
Just as we were talking about with Commissioner Silverstein's concern that there's, there's disingenuousness about purporting that this is a bicycle-friendly project with Calgreen 88 bike, you know, and it's really not quite accurate.
Perfect. Thank you.
And so it's a note that, and it, and strong encouragement. It, I would say, whereas they have chosen a reactive policy, I, I do think that, that will benefit them and the residents in the long term if they pursue this now because it will be a necessary element to the project in pretty short amount of time after the residents move in. I just experience it every day, so you can tell. I, I live this intersection every day.
All right. We have a motion and a second as it relates to the resolution crafted by staff. When we do the question, procedural question for staff, do we need to include a language about the summary meeting minutes and the two explicit components of that that commissioners have asked for? Do we need to include that as part of our vote, or can we simply provide that as guidance to you now, out, in advance of or and outside of the vote?
So, the guidance on the summary minutes is, is clear. I don't think that needs to be part of the official motion approving the resolution. Staff is definitely, you know, clear on, on the intent for the, for the minutes.
Thank you. Okay. So, with that, and not seeing any other hands raised, oh, there goes a hand.
Commissioner, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw my thing in here too, because I feel less strongly about the technical designation of the biking parking spaces and whether we're certifying them lead diamond or not, and more about the practical implications of not having bike parking and not having a sure access route for bikes, and about the thing that I really don't want to get buried in the minutes that one person said it might be nice. I want this access point to the park to be available to everybody because I think it will really, really help our community find their way around without having to drive. So, I would let, if we're elevating anything, can we, when we're elevating an extra drive, potential driving route, I would like to add that too, and then I'd be very happy to vote. But of course, it's up to the original motion maker, Vice Commander Eric.
Not to deep rail things entirely, but theoretically, that access to the public could be guaranteed without redesigning the project. Is that correct?
Yes, there's already a route. Sorry, you were maybe not asking me.
Well, I was, I was wondering if you were proposing to actually include that as a formal condition of approval, which in theory could, would not violate any of the waivers, or it would just be part of the actual approval, or if that was just a suggestion in terms of the summary minutes to staff.
Oh, I can do that. Could I make this a condition? I, I remember seeing in the minutes that they were talking about having it be only accessible to people who live within the development, and I find that wherever we do that in our community, I find that distasteful. I understand the rationale, but I would prefer that we have less lock-and-key type stuff, especially when we're talking about access to public spaces that are shared by all. So, is there a way that we can add that? Is anybody interested in this?
I think, before we get too much, let's, I think, let's ask the question of the applicant because my understanding, perhaps incorrect from prior conversations, was that this is not necessarily an applicant question. This is a county question. So, please, to the, to the applicant. So, I believe the question is, is it possible for the applicant in their, is it within your jurisdiction to determine who has access to that gate? And, and, but egress coming in and out of the park essentially?
No. So, yeah, the, the, the access with, thanks. Well, the, the access, access is going to have to be an agreement we make with the county. I guess I'll kind of further say, though, our project is private property. So, it's kind of like asking for someone to be able to walk through your backyard to get to a park. And would we take that on, we would also be taking on all of the liability of anyone tripping, falling, breaking their leg, getting hit by a car, you know, theft. It, it's just something that, it, it sounds really nice, but I don't think that we could really entertain it.
Understood, but we've just had the conversation about how life moves is allowing you to use their private property as a potential emergency access point, and I think it would just be a gesture of good faith. I mean, I understand you have some legal questions to resolve maybe with this, or some liability questions to resolve. But I can think of one other area in our community right now. Sorry, I know everybody wants to go home, but this, this is important. We have, we have a neighborhood access point in Felton Gables to a really nice park that's part of Atherton, and Felton Gables residents get keys to it. And there are kids who would like to use that to be able to bike to school safely, who can only get to Ensnell Elementary School on El Camino from neighborhoods in Menlo Park if they don't go through those gates, and they are not allowed to do it unless they somehow have an arrangement with neighbors. And this kind of thing really, I mean, just, I've seen us do this the wrong way before, and I really want us to get this right. And I, so I, I would encourage you to work out the liability, and I think it would be an extraordinary continuation of the good faith conversations you've already been having. I understand you don't have to do this, but I think for all kinds of reasons, it's the right choice. So.
I don't, I mean, I'm not even sure how it would work. It might have to be like a public easement to be walking through the property, but it's, I've been developing affordable housing for a long time. I've never seen it. In fact, we typically try to provide as much security for, both for our residents and vice versa, rather than make a wide-open property.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is the, is your vision for that access point from the property to the park to be controlled by a FOB in which residents would be able to access in and out?
Exactly.
And the public therefore wouldn't?
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beruzzi, just based on the nature of the conversation that we've, we've just had, as well as earlier this evening, I feel reasonably confident that at least it'll show up in the meeting minutes. And when we have a chance to, to go back and revisit the summary meeting minutes, and a chance to essentially call highlight points, language, perspectives, including the two that have been raised explicitly about bikes and about the second access point, would you be comfortable using that mechanism to highlight this third point that you're, you're talking about, which is the park access?
It'll be nice for people to know I tried, but I have no faith that it will have any impact.
Okay, thank you. So, I, my interpretation of that is that you are not asking for a modification to the staff resolution. But I would like, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Does anybody else have ideas about how to thread this needle? Commissioner Farrick, looks like she has something to say.
Commissioner Farrick.
I, I would support that. I share kind of recent minutes disappointment or lack of faith that there will be anything but, oh, I tried my best. There was a note in the minutes for any of these things, and so I'm increasingly suspicious. I also would love to hear more about why you wouldn't use organized labor, skilled tradesmen that have health insurance. I'd love to hear more about why. Yeah. Sorry to pivot. That was two things, but I'm just increasingly not feeling right about this mechanism of in the minutes. Project labor.
Well, I, and I, I think I've been very candid about what, what we're open and willing to look at and not. I mean, definitely, you know, the Caltrans area, the bike parking, having the public walking through our property to the park is, this is the first I've heard of it, and it's not, I, you know.
The public is my neighborhood.
Well, and, well, I, you know, I, I welcome you to make whatever suggestions, but that's not one that I, I will admit that we're, we'll have to check with insurance and legal, and I think it's unlikely.
Well, it kind of changed.
The other two suggestions I'm very open to, though. That's, so I want to be, you know, I feel like I'm being forthcoming with that.
No, I appreciate that. It's just interesting because my take would be that would be the easiest of the three and the cheapest. But, plus, like, the public walking through would be just people from adjacent neighborhoods. It's not, I don't know who, you know, it's a very penned-in community, as you know. Like, it's park, it's freeway, it's two, two single-family residential neighborhoods, and that's it. And so it's not like there would be this great flow of people rolling through. So, I'm just surprised to hear you push back on, on that of all of the things. And then second question is, why wouldn't you pursue?
Let me reframe it. I think I would be open to looking at it more. I think a lot of my own background comes from developing infill buildings for formerly homeless in Los Angeles, and typically, a lot of those buildings, we're trying to create literally one access point for the building for security, for our building, to maintain it and maintain the integrity of the residents. I realize this is a very different neighborhood, and so, yeah, I, I'd be willing to, to look at that and what it really means.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, even the design inspiration, those, those homes that he flashed up are actual suburban park houses.
Oh, yeah.
They're not stock photos, so.
Yeah, we talked about, will someone recognize it?
It is your neighbor, so it's that.
When you put it on the screen as their house.
Yeah. But no, but then the second question, if you, while you're at the dais, just could address why I, I should have followed up at the time. My apologies. But you just said no on project labor. What, can you tell me more?
It's, honestly, it's 100% cost. This is, will be probably the first project, affordable housing project, I have not built with prevailing wage. And it's also, when you compare the project costs of this compared with other Bay Area projects, it's significantly cheaper. We're desperately trying to compile all the money to make this project a reality. As it, I think it might have been discussed earlier, but I think a lot of people know we went before city council. We requested 2.4 million, which was really not even enough. They gave us 1 million. We're just trying to figure out where to get all of the money. Adding on prevailing wage, it's tough to say exactly what it'll do, but it will add somewhere between 15 to 30% to the cost. So, you know, I think someone mentioned our project cost is around 66 million. So, you got to figure that's, what, another 13 million that you'd be tacking on? And where do you get 13 million?
Where?
Market-rate projects could raise their rents.
But have you ever done an analysis of the cost of, you know, unskilled labor or, or the risk of not using people that have, you know, kind of been trained through the trades?
When you say risk, you mean like people picketing our project?
No, I mean, like, not as skilled, not as experienced, not as safe, not as able to do the work that you need done in a proper fashion, in a timely fashion?
I don't believe they're correlated. And one thing we've studied in our industry, because this is happening a lot at the, the state level, a lot of the new assembly bills and things focused specifically on affordable housing are requiring skilled and trained labor and things like that. And one thing it, it does do is it narrows the pool of contractors, which also increases prices and decreases diversity. So, requiring specific, like skilled and trained labor from union shops typically means you're going to have a less diverse set of contractors because there's a lot fewer of them.
Thank you for that information.
It's a trade-off. You know, I, I'd love to be able to do it, but it's.
And you have typically done it in Los Angeles, though?
Well, almost all of our, it, it's usually required by some funding source or another, and so it just happens.
Hmm.
Northern California, the whole, statewide, you know, but.
Thank you. Going back to the park access question, certainly not a lawyer, but, yeah, I can sympathize with the applicant's concern about people walking through the property. I, yeah, I don't imagine that being easily digestible. I think the, like, the examples I can think of from Roble to Nealon Park, I believe that's a public easement that does go close to some apartment buildings. So, I don't think the proximity's an issue, in my mind at least. But, yeah, I do think it would need to be some sort of easement. So, looking at the site map, perhaps it could go through the setback between the property line and Building 2, which I think is 10 feet wide. But that would mean people walking from Sheridan right past those buildings. So, I'm not sure how feasible that is. And one example I can think of is, my family and I, this is the year before last year, went to the Easter celebration that Menlo Park had at Flood Park, where I believe it's hosted by the Fire Department, and parking was just a nightmare. We rode our bikes, thankfully. But I could imagine people driving to that event, seeing, oh my God, the parking lot is crazy. I'll just park on Sheridan and walk through this building to get to the park. Easy peasy. So now you have all sorts of, you know, pedestrian traffic coming through the property unintentionally. So, an example like that could mean, you know, again, looking at the site map, people just walk into the parking lot and et cetera. So, generally, I'm sure it would be local residents, but there could be cases where it's not, and it could be a lot more people than intended. So, I think it would have to be a public easement, and I think that, you know, if tonight we make the secret declaration and the applicant has, if we have 60 days to approve the project, I imagine it'd be hard to get, get that finalized within that timeframe. But I do totally sympathize with you, Commissioner Beruzzi, that this should have been thought of earlier, and it would be a very nice thing to have. And, yeah, and then there's an article in the almanac or something about all the people that have access to the park in Atherton from the backyard, and no one knows, you know, who put those gates there and who controls them. That's strange. I did, I know there's a motion on the table, and I just, I think for transparency's sake, wanted to bring up a couple of things from the public comments and discussion before. That would put me at ease in terms of moving forward, if that's okay. I'll try to be quick. So, about the parking permits, a question for staff. The city ordinance, I believe, says that you can get an annual parking pass to park on the street overnight if you live in an apartment building that doesn't have enough parking. Does that not apply to this particular project?
That, I believe, only applies to certain parts of the city. The police department is the, the police department issues those permits. And I believe there was also, like, certain properties that they issue those for now. It's not, you know, like a wholesale, this property doesn't have enough parking, therefore you get a parking permit. It's, it's pretty limited.
Okay. Well, I'm on the website, city website, police department parking permits. It says qualifying, so certain addresses in Menlo Park may qualify for an annual ordinary parking permit. Qualifying addresses are limited to those apartment buildings that lack adequate off-street parking spaces, less than two spaces per unit. This project has less than two spaces per unit. This project has less than two spaces per unit and are zoned R3. This project is zoned R3. So at least based on this short sentence, it seems to qualify. And this is only in the interest of clarifying for the public whether this might happen or not. I'm not trying to, you know, put some new condition in, just for clarification.
Thanks for the question, I appreciate it. So we can certainly follow up more thoroughly, but as Mr. Turner mentioned, and as Commissioner Sellen mentioned, that there are qualifying addresses, so just because you, the address might be located in the R3 zone, this does not mean it qualifies. And so a lot of these parking permits are issued for older buildings that were in place prior to the overnight parking prohibition, which would have affected those properties. I do not have all the details in front of me, but our understanding from staff is that a new development in the R3 would be expected to manage its parking onsite and not be eligible for these overnight parking permits. It really is for those older projects or developments that, you know, have maybe one space per unit or fewer and were built at a time when there was ample street parking before the overnight ordinance.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, appreciate it. So a couple of questions for the applicant, if I may. One of the things raised by some of the public commenters was the ratio of bedrooms, 1, 2, 3. I was wondering if you could comment on how you came up with those numbers? Yeah, just, just again, for sake of clarifying for the public.
It's, it really comes down primarily to density. So we want to be able to provide as many low-income units as we possibly can on the site. It's a requirement to be called a family affordable project, to have at least 25% two bedrooms and 25% three bedrooms on the site. And so making the balance of them one bedrooms really makes it so we can provide additional density and provide housing to additional families. And we have done market study that shows that there isn't demand for that, but not, I guess, vice versa, like you're asking.
Thanks. And then, yeah, one more question. Since there is, I share the concern about just having things in the minutes, and since we have you here, I just thought I'm going to ask, given everything you've heard about our concerns about the car parking, the bike parking, again, this, you know, you wouldn't be legally bound to any of this, but could you comment on what you've heard and whether you're considering any changes as a result, or how you're considering approaching the next few years after construction is done to see what changes you might make to the bike and car parking situation?
Well, I, like I was saying, I feel like I've been fairly forthcoming, so I'll just kind of reiterate. You know, my, my primary concern is getting it built. We don't really want to make changes right now so we could make sure we get in to apply for financing and start building. I feel that we have parked it appropriately so people will not wind up in the neighborhood parking there. You know, that's, that's part of it. And I think as far as, like, bicycle parking goes, we're definitely open to seeing, you know, what, who lives there and what bicycles they bring. I understand that, you know, maybe people are, you know, maybe someone with a cargo bike doesn't move in. I know that's a possibility. I think a lot of affordable housing, people, they're, they want the housing. They, I mean, they, they see what the rent is, and in a lot of the situation, like, you know, we heard from the Ravenswood District, it's like, people don't want the commute. So when they think about, like, okay, well, I'm going to figure out my bike versus, you know, driving two hours to work, they do it. You know, they'd rather pay the low rent. So I, you know, I, and, and I think that, you know, people are making trade-offs, too. You know, it's like, when, when you're low income, I don't know how likely it is you spend a few thousand dollars on, on the bicycle at that point. But if it happens, you know, we want the project to look nice, we want the residents to enjoy where they live, and if more long-term bicycle parking is needed, you know, we want that.
Could you comment on how that works? Like, once the project is up and running, what funds do you have available to add additional things, like more covered bike parking? And I guess what incentive do you have to make changes versus trying to control costs?
I guess it's, you know, just general upkeep of the property. It's a big difference adding, like, we had, I forget the exact number, I think Lance guessed at like $2,400 for a bike storage facility for two bikes. So it's a lot different to gradually add those kind of things than to just say, okay, we're going to put 88 of those on right now at a, you know, quarter of a million dollars or, you know, even more, the ones that hold the cargo ones, that would be like, whatever, $5,000 each, you know, to add them as appropriate.
Okay.
Commissioner Sellen. I think, given, just, I'll do a little procedural process, a little check here.
I'm not asking questions, just for the record.
Given the time and where we are in the discussion, I get the sense that, very, very understandably, there is still, there are loose threads and there are issues that are not resolved the way that we would like them to be. They are not perfect. They're not, we haven't answered all of the public questions, and I think this commission is incredibly dedicated to surfacing information and trying to find nuance, and in some cases, trying to find solutions. So that is still possible. However, this is kind of, I'm going to ask us to pull up and see whether our loose threads and our discomforts require us to go a different direction than is already on the table. Because at this hour, if we are going to do that, I want to leave time for that. So I think I was, I would like to go ahead and call a vote on the resolution that is, has a first and a second. Commissioner Farrak.
Can I make one comment to explain why I will vote the way I will on the measure, on the, on the motion?
Would you like to make that when you vote, or would you like to make that now?
I can make it when I vote, that's fine. I just know you, we usually whip through it like, da, 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 da.
I will go, I will go slowly and gracefully, because I'm moving slowly at this time of night.
Me, too.
Okay. We have a first and a second, to adopt a resolution as crafted by staff. I will call for the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Ish, I mean, I, I, yay. Yes, yes.
Present, here. Commissioner Doe left the meeting.
That present is a different vote than yes, by the way.
Yeah, sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner Doe is not present, so she is not voting. Vice Chair Eric.
I would like to say thank you to the applicant. We, a lot of asked of you, is asked of you in this project, and this is difficult and really important work. And we asked a lot of questions of you tonight, and I just want to make sure, at least, you know, from me personally, I deeply appreciate how committed all of you are to this cause. That is not to say that any of the questions that were asked tonight were in any way untoward. I think this was a wonderful discussion, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
I will explain first, before I vote, why this is such a struggle. I fully intended to come here tonight and get to yes, but I can't get to yes tonight because no study or mitigation for most, the most impacted intersections of the project was done. I don't feel the commission has been able to sufficiently do its job so that we can ensure the project is planned well and future projects can be accommodated. The inability to require a pursuit of some of the things that we've mentioned, including second ingress, egress, even after the fact, I appreciate that the applicant is expressing willingness, but there is no mechanism that we have at this point to require it without either continuing or declining the project at this time. Their reactive, if it happens, nature of managing active transportation for bike amenities feels very insufficient because it's a chicken and egg, as we know, and they won't buy bikes if there's nowhere to put them, et cetera, et cetera. Their willingness, the lack of willingness to talk to the, you know, to really reconsider the skilled tradespeople from our construction trades locally is surprising. It makes me really disappointed. I want to support this project, it's a much-needed project. This would provide housing for teachers who we all love and need and, you know, really need to value more, for our Ravenswood School District. And so I do want to get to yes, and so I was hoping that the outcome, without being able to ensure some changes or requirements tonight, would be that we could continue it, come back, because this is the second of up to five public hearings on this project. So there is time and room. I totally hear you and agree that we don't want to delay it past the point of no return by any stretch. And I'm, and it hasn't been delayed, this is the first time we've seen this project as a body. The tax credit round apparently is in May, I'm just going off of the applicant expressing that, so assuming that's true. That's five months away. We, in my mind, have time for them to revisit some of the three primary loose ends that have been surfaced tonight, come back, and I would be delighted enthusiastically to support it at that time. Right now, no.
Commissioner Sellen.
Yeah, so before I vote, my quick comment is, no project is perfect, and I'm not 100% comfortable with the project, I think. But hearing what I've heard tonight, I do appreciate the developer being very transparent, all the comments, all the community coming forward. And I think it's on us as a city to, we have a lot of planning documents and processes, we just need to be more, I think, targeted in the things we're talking about with the developer ahead of time, such as park access, such as really focusing, since we champion ourselves as a, you know, community that values climate change, you know, resiliency, et cetera, to plan for things like that ahead of time. But, that being said, I mean, I think the most important thing by far is that we have people that work in our community, especially with our children, that are commuting from very far away, and they want to be able to live here. We have people living in RVs and homeless shelters, as Commenters said before. And I don't think that any of the issues raised tonight mean that we should stall this project any further. So I, again, want to just encourage the developer to embrace our goals in the city, as vague as they may be. And I think, to me, that means encouraging pedestrian and bike transportation instead of driving. But, yeah, that being said, I support the motion and vote yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Silverstein.
I also want to give my big thanks to the developer and the applicant for all of the answers to our questions tonight and through the, going through this overall process. I think we're all very much in favor of a project such as this. I want to express a broader disappointment over the evolution of questions around bike parking. And, you know, we as a city, I think two of our three city official priorities, or two of our five, are around our Climate Action Plan and our Vision Zero Action Plan, and so many of those things are around how we can promote active transportation, how we can reduce car dependency, and so many of the kind of little decisions that we make along the way allow us to move toward that direction. And, you know, over months of feedback around this project, so far, what happened was, we turned Dog Park, which I recognize was something that was a decision that you made that you didn't need, and added it for bike storage facilities, which doesn't give me particular confidence. So this is the direction that you, as developers, want to see the project move towards and be a champion of teachers biking to school instead of having to drive, and add towards traffic along Bay Road and certainly Bay and Middlefield, which we are, or Ringwood, which we know is currently rough. So I am not confident that we will see that progress made for this project. I understand a wait-and-see approach is, is the tact that you guys are making, but I, I guess time will tell. That being said, I agree with Commissioner Sellen that, you know, these elements don't, don't rise to the point of actually trying to block the housing and the actual project overall, so I vote yes.
I am also a yes. So the resolution passes with five yes votes and one no vote. I would like to applaud, and one absence, thank you, thank you, thank you. I would like to applaud the quality and the tenacity of thought and questioning from the commission tonight. You guys make me think about things that I might not have thought about, and I appreciate the myriad perspectives and the follow-through and making sure that we're bringing things that get asked by the public up here and doing our best to represent and get, get the information out there. I appreciate it, it's been an honor to just be part of the conversation, so thank you. I will close F1 and move us into the final step of our, I'm sorry, thank you, also to the applicant. I share my thanks, applicant and staff. And I think with that, I will turn it over to, I don't even know where we are in the script anymore. Oh, just G, informational items. Mr. Prada, any updates on upcoming meetings and agendas?
Yes, thank you. The next meeting of the Planning Commission will be Monday, January 27. We have four single-family use permits scheduled for that meeting. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to, or informational items, happy to answer any questions.
Do commissioners have any questions about the informational items or anything else? Okay, thank you. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:48 PM. Thank you, everybody.